Okay. All right, good afternoon, everyone. We're going to call and order this meeting of the City Council for the afternoon of October 3rd. Let's do a roll call.
Jimenez.
Present.
Torres.
Present.
Cohen. Ortiz.
Present.
Davis.
Here.
Dwan.
Present.
Candelas.
Here.
Batra.
Present.
Kameh.
Here.
Mayhan.
Here.
We have Corm.
Thank you. Now, if you're able, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, today's invocation will be given by Ramya Ramakrishnan of the Hindu American Foundation, and Vice Mayor Kameh will tell us more.
Thank you so much, Mayor Mayhan. The Hindu American Foundation is the nation's largest and oldest advocacy and education organization for Hindu Americans. Established 20 years ago to protect the civil rights of the Hindu community in the United States. Since its inception in 2003, the Hindu American Foundation has also led efforts in California and the rest of the country to recognize October as Hindu American Awareness and Appreciation Month. October was chosen because of its significance to the Hindu faith and as it is when holidays such as Navariti and Diwali are celebrated. Our city is lucky to have such beautiful spiritual and religious diversity and to have so many residents who practice and believe Hindu traditions. I am proud to welcome Ramya Rashmakrishnan. Ramakrishnan from the Hindu American Foundation to deliver an invocation prayer for us here today. Thank you for coming.
Thank you so much, Vice Mayor, and thank you, everybody. I'm really honored to be here today. I'm going to chant some Hindu prayers in Sanskrit language from sacred Hindu texts, followed by an English translation. Om Asatoma Sadgamaya Tamasoma Jotirgamaya Mrityorma Amritamgamaya Om Shanti Shanti Shantihi. Lead us from the unreal to the real. Lead us from darkness to light. Lead us from death to immortality. Om, lead us towards peace, peace, and peace all around. Om Sahana Pavatu Sahana Bhunaktu Sahavidyam Karava Vahi Tejaspinavati Tamastu Maavit Vishava Vahi Om Shanti Shanti Shantihi. Thank you. Om, may the divine protect all of us together. May the divine nourish us together with knowledge. May we work conjointly with great energy. May our study be brilliant and effective. May we not have any misunderstanding. Om, let there be peace in me. Let there be peace in my environment. Let there be peace on the forces that act on me. Om Sarvesham Swastir Bhavatu Sarvesham Shantir Bhavatu Sarvesham Purnam Bhavatu Sarvesham Mangalam Bhavatu Om Shanti Shanti Shantihi. May there be well-being in all. May there be peace in all. May there be fulfillment in all. May there be auspiciousness in all. Om, peace, peace, peace. I'm now going to read a prayer from the children's Hindu prayer book authored by Milind Makwana, because of whom I'm here today. Our Hindu community misses our well-loved leader, whose unfortunate demise has left a huge vacuum, but he will live forever in our hearts. Om Sarve Bhavantu Sukinaha Sarvesantu Niramaya Sarve Badhrani Pasyantu Maakashchit Dukabhaag Bhave Om Shanti Shanti Shantihi. Om, may all become happy. May all be free from illness. May all see what is auspicious. May no one suffer. Om, peace, peace, peace. I'm going to conclude by chanting a very powerful mantra called Gayatri Mantra. Om Bhur Bhuvasvaha Tatsavitur Vanirnyam Bhargo Devasya Dhimahi Dhio Yona Prachotayata. Om, that divine illumination which pervades the physical plane, the other world, and heaven; that divine illumination which is the most adorable; on that divine radiance we meditate; may that enlighten our intellect and awaken our spiritual wisdom. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you for that beautiful invocation. We're on to ceremonial items. Councilmember Cohen and Councilmember Ortiz, if you'll join me at the podium, we will recognize and proclaim Filipino-American History Month.
All right, good afternoon. I'm proud to be here with my colleague, Councilmember Ortiz, as we proclaim October Filipino-American History Month. I'm also excited to be standing here with members of the Coalition Filipino-Americans Coming Together in San Jose, also known as FACT S.J., to honor the Filipino-American community, one of the largest ethnic groups in San Jose. FACT S.J.'s work provides a gateway to civic engagement for the Filipino community with a particular focus on young people. In fact, I'm going to mention Angela Pedregal from my office. She's here because of her involvement with FACT S.J., which inspired her to bring her talents to government work. This year, Filipino-American History Month's national theme is 1898, 125 years of recognizing Philippine-American history. It uplifts the many contributions, histories, and experiences of Filipinos in the United States. The Filipino-American community has left a positive, indelible mark on San Jose by enriching its diverse culture, workforce, and spirit. And District 4 is home to a large Filipino population and District 5 as well, which adds to our community's tremendous vibrancy and also provide many excellent community leaders. Join us on Friday, October 13th, at 5:00 PM for the annual Filipino Flag-Raising and Lighting Ceremony right here at City Hall, as well as on Friday, October 20th, at 5:00 PM for the FAM Jam at Bariessa Flea Market in District 4. Thank you, and let's give a warm welcome to Mark Serrano, Executive Director for the Filipino Youth Coalition. Happy Filipino-American History Month.
Good afternoon, members of San Jose City Council and Mayor Mayhan. My name is Mark Serrano, and I am a representative of a collective of Filipino and social justice school of San Jose, Pawi South Bay, Malaya South Bay, and Movable. As a collective, we aim to bring a wide array of services to the San Jose community, whether that be youth finding a way to connect to their roots as Filipino-Americans, Filipino-Americans wanting to participate in civic engagement, or seniors that are wanting to have their legacy and stories documented and spread. For Filipino-Americans, the month of October isn't just about Halloween and the beginning of the holidays. It represents hundreds of years of existence and experience here in the United States. We've deemed October as Filipino-American History Month because on the 18th of October, 1587, the first Filipinos jumped out to the Nuestra Senora de Buena Esperanza as slaves of the Manila Galleon Trade and forever set the course of what is now Filipino-American history. Through these hundreds of years of existence here in the United States, we have endured several hardships and discriminations. These parts of our past is what makes up the experiences and history of Filipino-Americans. Many of us do not have connections with the motherland and its complex history and culture, so we, as Filipino-Americans, must make our own here in the U.S. Every day, our actions, decisions, opinions, accomplishments, and downfalls add to said history. We are currently in times of uncertainty. With the amount of information and technology that is available to our community, as well as social media, we are in great danger of Filipino-American history fading away and eventually disappearing. This proclamation given by the City of San Jose serves as a way to keep our Filipino-American community proud of who they are and the road that we have traveled. Many of us were born here and do not have the outlets and resources to be able to help us explain why our skin is brown, why our parents speak in Filipino dialects but speak to us in English, and why general society here in the U.S. does not understand who we are. Recognizing October as Filipino-American History Month helps us as community activists, advocates, and educators to be able to continue the history that started when the Filipino slaves of the Manila Galleon Trade landed here in the U.S. Your recognition is greatly appreciated. Mahalos and salamas.
All right, Vice Mayor Kameh, if you would join me at the podium, we will recognize and proclaim National Walk and Roll to School Day. Sounds fun?
Thank you so much. First, I want to thank my colleague, Councilmember Pam Foley, who couldn't be with us today. But, you know, it is through her leadership that she brought this forward, so I want to personally say thank you so much. We are here today to proclaim tomorrow, October 4th, as National Walk and Roll to School Day in celebration of the city's Walk and Roll to School initiative. This initiative promotes more healthy, sustainable, and interconnected communities by making it easier for kids to walk and bike to school. The program achieves this through a six-part approach: address the needs of marginalized communities, measure success metrics, incorporate pedestrian and bicyclist safety into street design, teach children safety practices, motivate kids through fun activities, and deter unsafe behavior from others. Walking and biking to school has many significant positive impacts in our community and for kids. It promotes physical and mental health and serves to build their confidence and life skills. It reduces car trips, thereby reducing carbon emissions and air pollution. It fosters a greater sense of community by encouraging neighbors to interact, and it makes everyone, kids, parents, drivers, bicyclists, and pedestrians, safer. Every child deserves a safe journey to and from school, and it's imperative that we invest in the necessary initiatives to make this a reality. I am pleased to be joined today by some of the Department of Transportation staff who have worked to host Walk and Roll events from September through November at schools across the city. I would now like to welcome Program Manager for Walk and Roll, Ann Jasper, to accept the proclamation and say a few words.
Thank you, Councilmember Kameh. We've been celebrating International Walk to School Day at over 30 schools this fall term. We've been conducting safety assemblies, over a dozen so far, and more to come, some bike rodeos, in fact, we have one tomorrow. And we've been celebrating International Walk to School Day in at least one school in every council district. I want to give a huge thanks to my whole Walk and Roll team here for supporting all kinds of events from morning to evening. We just did Aviva Esquela this morning at 6:00 AM, so we're running on our second wind. So if your kids go to a school that's not a Walk and Roll school, please do see me. We'd love to have you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. This affects all of our kids, our families, and communities, and makes them better. So thank you so, so much for all the work that you do. And I'm going to ask my colleagues to come down if you'd join us for a quick photo and have the mayor present the proclamation to the team.
Thank you. On behalf of the whole City Council, thank you guys for what you're doing.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for making it. Yeah. Thank you for making it happen.
Get your kids home.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you so much. We're next, right?
We're next. So sorry, I would just spend an afternoon at the tent. I have the worst. It's terrible. All right. Now, I'm joined by Councilmember Davis. We're going to proclaim Italian-American Heritage Month. I want to invite our Italian-American community leaders down. I'll say a few words and then hand it over to them to talk about this exciting month. Okay. So, thank you, guys, for being here. Welcome. Thanks for coming down. And I'll hand it off to you. Okay. Great. So I want to thank Councilmember Davis and members of our Italian-American community for being here today to celebrate and recognize Italian-American Heritage Month and pay tribute to the incredible contributions and enduring legacy of the Italian-American community in San Jose, of which I feel a small part. My great-grandparents on my mother's side moved here from Genoa just over 100 years ago, so I also feel connected to that legacy myself. And they came here for a better life and for opportunities here in the Valley of Hearts Delight. We are very fortunate to have some community-based organizations that work very hard to preserve and promote the history of our Italian-American ancestors and the many contributions they've made to our city and to help all of us have access to and stay connected to Italian culture. This past Sunday, Little Italy had its sixth annual Little Italy Street Festival, which has not only been drawing tens of thousands of people to our city to enjoy Italian food, art, and wine in San Jose, but it has also been bringing people to Little Italy, which is a growing cultural hub with a variety of Italian-American restaurants, businesses, and historical sites that commemorate Italian-Americans from our city, including A.P. Giannini, the founder of the Bank of Italy, which later became Bank of America, as you all know. We also have the Italian-American Heritage Foundation, which preserves and promotes Italian culture and the contributions of Italian-Americans in our city. My family and I had the pleasure of attending their 41st Family Festa at History Park this summer to join in the food and fun. And I even competed in the first-ever grape-stomping competition against Milpitas Mayor Carmen Montano and Santa Clara Mayor Lisa Gilmore. And I'm proud to say San Jose came in first place. Let me tell you, one minute of grape-stomping is a long time. I was out of breath by the end, but we just pulled it out. Since their start as farmers and small-business owners in the 19th and early 20th century, Italian-Americans have gone on to contribute in many more ways as farmers, developers, leaders in philanthropy, and civic leaders, including some of our great city leaders, including Mayor Sam Liccardo, City Manager Deb Fagoni, and Vice Mayor Frank Fiscalini. As we celebrate Italian-American Heritage Month, let us also take a moment to reflect on the values that unite all of us in this beautiful city of immigrants—the values of hard work, family, community, and the pursuit of the American dream. These are values that Italian-Americans have celebrated and embraced for generations, and they continue to be the bedrock of our diverse and inclusive city. Now, joining us today, joining Councilmember Davis and I up here this afternoon, are Sal Caruso, who helped build Little Italy San Jose through his company Salvatore Caruso Design Corporation. He also serves as the Honorary Consul of Italy. Dana Zuccarello, President of the Italian-American Heritage Foundation. And I understand that Josh Melander, the president of Little Italy San Jose, isn't able to join us. I hope he's doing okay. But I think we have representatives from Little Italy San Jose as well, so I'm going to give them an opportunity to also share a few words. Sal, you want to kick us off?
Thank you very much, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. In 1968, my mom and I were on our way to downtown San Jose to grab some apple pie and some ice cream after we had just gone to the fifth memorial mass for John F. Kennedy's passing at Sacred Heart Church. When we entered the bus, the bus driver gestured that we should go to the back of the bus. And my mom explained to me, at six years old, that that was because we were immigrants, and immigrants go to the back of the bus. I defiantly took my mom's hand and sat down in the front seat of the bus, and I guess that was my first peaceful act of civil disobedience. Remember context, that was only 23 years after the end of World War II. At that time, Italian-Americans were considered enemy aliens of the United States, even though many Italians, including my grandfather, were part of the resistance in Italy helping the Allied forces win the war for freedom. During World War II, both Italian-Americans and Japanese-Americans were placed in camps. I left the United States in '79 to study architecture for five years in Italy. After a brief encounter with Dominic and Sue Cortese, the parents of Senator Dave Cortese, they said, "Probably a good time to come back. Things are booming in the Valley. Great time to come back." And so I did. And upon my return, I was blessed to get a job with Swenson Builders. And at that time, I was under the mentorship of three amazing men: Lee Kawahara, Mike Higashi, and the Honorable Norm Manetta. All men were of Japanese descent, clearly, and all had been interred in those camps. So my understanding of the plight of many immigrants, not just Italian-Americans, grew. And I basically read everything I could find on Martin Luther King, John F. Kennedy, and the amazing Civil Rights Act of 1964, trying to create equality for all of us immigrants. Columbus Day was created by President Harrison in 1892 in response to an anti-Italian slash Sicilian-motivated lynching of 11 Italian-Americans. So you can understand why the Italian-Americans are very sensitive to the fact when we believe that we should have also the recognition in Italian-American culture and U.S. culture. And that bias did exist at the time. Italian culture goes back 2,000 years through innovation and invention—the discovery of cement, aqueducts, the Renaissance of art, architecture, beauty, with the works of Da Vinci, Michelangelo, Bernini; in modern fashion, Armani, Gucci, Ferragamo, Dolce Gabbana; in cars, Ferrari, Lamborghini; in banking, A.P. Giannini, as our mayor mentioned, founded Bank of Italy, actually; and then in 1930, had to be changed to Bank of America for growing anti-Italian sentiment in the United States at that time. In San Jose, local Italian-Americans have contributed greatly, like the Sobrato Foundation, Donapoli Family, Marches, Rubinos, Corteses, and many more, many behind the scenes like Paul Odolini, who was the CEO of Intel Corp. for its rise to what it is today. I made my first charitable act about 20 years ago to Arleta de Guadalupe Parish in East San Jose to design it and renovate it, because it was the place where new immigrants come to seek faith and where Cesar Chavez launched his first movement along with Robert Kennedy and Ethel Kennedy. Beauty, art, and passion are part of Italian culture. I thank you personally, as someone who was raised in the time of the Civil Rights Act, striving for equality in the United States. This proclamation, signed by all of you, means a great deal to all Italian-Americans. Thank you on behalf of the Italian consulate for recognizing that our heritage has contributed to the culture and formation of America, America that is named after another Italian explorer, Amerco Vespucci. In striving for peace and understanding amongst us, I propose that there be consideration of a unity festival in San Jose where all cultures are welcome to join and celebrate our unity as one race, the human race. Thank you very much for your kindness.
Sure. I wasn't expecting to say anything, but our leader of Little Italy San Jose is not here, Josh DiVincenzi. I just wanted to say two things. Thank you to the mayor. Thank you to City Council and all of the community for supporting the growth of Little Italy. It's really been a fantastic ride. I've been on the board for about 10 years, and I still can't believe the progress that we've made. There's a lot to go. So thank you all for your very, very, very welcomed help. The second is, I really invite everybody to come check out any one of our festivals. The Italian Festival this weekend, the street festival, was crazy. I was there from 6:00 o'clock in the morning to 11:00 o'clock at night helping, and I enjoyed every minute of it. So please, come enjoy the fruits of our labor. We have plenty of festivals coming up, so we would love to share our history. As soon as the museum is up and running, I also advise you to go check that out, because we're going to have plenty of things there, including cooking classes, which I don't care what background you're from, you can enjoy learning how to make some pasta. Thank you.
My name is Dana Zuccarello from the Italian-American Heritage—thank you—Foundation. I just wanted to thank Mayor Mahan and all the council members for this proclamation. I've been on the board five years now, and I love volunteering. We have cooking classes, Italian language classes, regional lunches that feature a different region every month throughout Italy at our hall. We have classes for genealogy. We have—we Chenafori. We visit different Italian restaurants every month, and it's not just for Italians. We have members that are part of our club that are not Italian, but you are all welcome to come check us out. We're online, Italian-American Heritage Foundation, sj.iahfsj.org. So thank you, Mayor Matt, and all the council members.
We're on to orders of the day. Does anyone on the council have any changes to the printed agenda? Okay, seen none. We will move on to the closed session report.
Thank you, Mayor. We do not have a report out of closed session today.
Thank you, Nora. Okay, on to the consent calendar. Are there any items that the council would like to pull from the consent calendar?
Mayor, I have a question about 211, although I didn't notify the police department that I was going to ask some questions. So I'll ask my question to the extent they have the answer.
Sure.
They can answer, and if not, I can take it offline.
Go ahead.
So the question is—I wanted to understand, so we're purchasing this—it's a report on request for proposal for police early intervention solution. It's effectively software that we're purchasing over a span of three years, I think. But I'm curious about—can you tell me a little bit about how it works? Because I don't think—there's not much in the memo as to how the system is going to capture some of the information.
Yes, sir. So Benchmark works in collaboration with the University of Chicago, and they have over 20-plus scientists, data scientists, that gather information. And what we do is, from our department, we give them arrest data, complaint data, and also data reforces to uses of force. And regarding all that data, is the data scientist collaborate that information, and with proprietary information, they create interventions and alerts on our different officers, both that are going to prevent a—maybe either a positive or a negative. If officers are really proactive, it's going to say, "Hey, you officers are doing a really fantastic job out in the field." And if there's maybe an officer that's going to have an adverse event in the future, what that data tells us is, "Hey, you know what? I need to speak with a certain officer prior to an adverse event occurring," whether that's a collision, a use of force, or potentially avoiding a complaint.
So just so I understand, so the data they're mining to then extrapolate whatever decisions or conclusions they're reaching as it relates to what officer to talk to about this or that, good or bad, right?
Yes, sir.
Are they going into—the are they looking at—I guess I'm—maybe I didn't hear you because the sound sort of sucks, but are they looking at all the, like, the reports? Or are they—I mean, I'm trying to understand, are they looking at—I imagine part of the touch point is the behavior, interaction with the officers and with different—during the scope of their workday, right? All the different things that they're doing. What exactly is the information they're scouring to see what?
They're getting information from our databases related to the amount of uses of force that they're involved in, and also their complaint history, right, as well as their arrest data. And they're comparing that to the general demographics of the department and as well as their peer groups. And then we're saying, "Hey, these are the officers that potentially are doing a phenomenal job." As you guys know, is that all of our officers are out there, they're working, and they're doing a phenomenal job for our community, keeping our community safe. And at the same point is, maybe we can identify some officers that are having some deficiencies and then proactively take a—proactive measures to address those deficiencies before they can become an adverse event, and they're involved in some adverse event.
Okay. Okay. I guess I still have some questions. I want a better—so—but we'll do it offline, but I just wanted to wrap my head around because the memo didn't touch on that. But thank you so much for the information. I'll reach out separately. Appreciate it.
Okay. I don't see any other hands. Thank you. I think we're good on that item. Councilmember, would you like to move the consent calendar?
I'll move the consent calendar.
Second.
Great. Let's go to public comment.
Paul Soto.
Yes, Paul Soto from the horseshoe. Thank you for those questions, Councilman Jimenez, because I had my own. I want to know what the metrics are. What precisely—and you were hitting on it—you had the same kinds of concerns that I have. Where are you getting this information? What information are you placing there? What are the—what—where's the threshold that's going to compel a flag? You know, there's a lot—and that's why consent calendars are not for items like this. This is not the proper forum, especially for something as serious as this. This is extremely serious. This can be directly related to the George Floyd incident. So we need to—you know, we need to get those kind of dudes out of there. They don't belong having a badge. Nobody's going to—nobody's going to disagree with me that bad cops should be no cop. So we're all in agreement on that. Another thing that I'd like to do is thank Chief Mata for allowing this process to happen. You see, in administrations prior, probably with the exception of Cova Rubias and McNamara, this would never happen. This certainly wouldn't have happened under Fast Eddie Garcia's administration, but it's happening under Chief Mata's. So I want to acknowledge him for that, because he's been very consistent with what it is that he said that he would do as chief of police, and that is allow more community involvement. Now, there is no community involvement in this, so there needs to be a board, some type of community board, that's going to—that this particular—this particular business or whatever it is that it answers to, to the community. Because these are cops that are in the community that really don't belong being cops. They should, you know, just go on about their way. So thank you for the questions that you asked, Councilman—
Larry Beekman.
Hi. Larry Beekman here. Thanks a lot for the words of Paul Soto. Thanks a lot for the words of Councilperson Jimenez also. Yeah, I mean, it was some nice questions that were answered about a part of this process that—thank you. I think along with the sort of data collection for officers, the concepts of better counseling services for officers themselves needs to have a really important part in the future of this process, is kind of a more comprehensive approach to dealing with issues of officers and how they can talk about their issues better. And once you start doing that, that creates a trust that we need to be working on, and that these sort of items have been coming up since the George Floyd things, is way to better address police issues. Good luck in these efforts. The one thing I'm not clear about—in being from San Diego at this time, we're working a lot on ALPR issues, the feature of smart streetlights in the community. All this sort of technology— this sort of technology is being developed for the future of ALPR use in what you're talking about here, and how it can work within ALPR systems. Now, is that a part of this process here? And if it is, we need to have that open conversation. I've been talking with Mayor Mahan all this fall, that simply and clearly, we have to be more open about these sort of conversations, and not be so, I don't know what the term is, just narrow in our approach at public comment, what exactly we're talking about. We have to not fear that we can talk about these subjects openly. If you're talking about possible ALPR use with this project, and how it can be a part of data collection practices, there's really good, with, you know, the concepts of AI from civic innovation at this time, they're really trying to practice human rights issues. We have to work toward those goals, and we have to be honest.
Mike Caruso.
Hello?
Go ahead, Mike.
You can hear me?
Yes.
Oh, great. Good afternoon. I wanted to speak further on the positive benefits of immigration, at least how it used to be. You know, the Hart-Seller Act of 1965 really changed the immigration in America from people like the great Italian-Americans that we had here today to Third World shitskins and, you know.
This is on the consent calendar, sir?
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, so about George Floyd, and how we can help the police out, or make the situation a little bit better with police, I think it would be great if we found a way to keep criminals from eating all their drugs.
I'm sorry, I don't know that this is an item on the consent calendar, sir.
GTVflyers.com, gas the kites.
Raymond Gowens.
Do we have other hands up?
Paul Miller. Paul Miller. Back to the council.
Okay, let's vote on the consent calendar.
Motion passes.
Great, thank you. Okay, we're on to item 8.2, which is the approval of the issuance of a tax-exempt multifamily housing revenue bond. And we have a short staff presentation.
Thank you, Mayor, council, members of the public, Rosalyn Huey, Deputy City Manager and Acting Housing Director. I'm joined today by Rachel Vanderveen, Assistant Director of Housing, Kemet Mawakama, Housing Division Manager, Banu San, who is the Housing Department's Housing Policy and Planning Administrator, and Chin Yusung, Deputy Director in the Finance Department. So staff is very excited to present the bond issuance for the Parkmore Apartments for council's approval today. And before we get into the details of the project, I just wanted to provide some context as to why affordable housing construction is so very important to our city. As you can see in this slide, our Regional Housing Needs Allocation, or ARENA, number for the sixth cycle is a very big number, 62,200 units. And you'll see on the slide, 55% of these units are for affordable housing. As we look at how the city has performed in producing housing over the years, just taking a look at the last ARENA cycle, you can see here on this slide that we were only able to meet just 26% of our affordable housing requirement, while we actually met 115% of our market rate requirement. So we can see that for the city, we must continue to focus on affordable housing production. And in fact, every affordable housing project that we bring to this council for your consideration is helping us to meet that affordable housing need. So with that, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Kemet to provide some highlights of the project.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Kemet Mawakana, Division Manager of the Residential Development Division of the Housing Department. Today, we're seeking your approval for the issuance of tax-exempt bonds for the financing of the Parkmore Community Apartments located at 1510 Parkmore Avenue. Parkmore is an 81-unit development serving extremely low, very low, and low-income levels, including 40 units of affordable housing for the foster youth community, both individuals and families. In addition, at the ground floor level, there will be approximately 17,000 square foot county-owned and operated youth community center called The Hub, which the County of Santa Clara is financing. The City of San Jose is financing the housing portion of the development only by contributing 16.8 million. This is one of our 2021 NOFA projects. I will turn it over to my colleague Chin Yusung to discuss the bond financing aspect in greater detail.
Thank you, Kemet. Chin Yusung, Deputy Director of Finance for Debt and Treasury. In addition to the loan provided by the Housing Department for about the $17 million, the city is going to issue about $40 million tax-exempt bonds through public offering to finance a portion of the construction project. The project costs way more than $40 million, just to be clear. And the tax-exempt bonds to be issued on the open market will be rated and credit-enhanced. We have selected Stifel, Nicolaus and Company as the underwriter to help the city to issue the bonds. The bond issuance will be comprised of two series. The first series, F1, is about a little bit over $2 million. It has a term of up to 15 years after the conversion. And the second series, F2, is about $38 million. It has a very much shorter term, as a mandatory tender after three years. Both bonds are rated AAA by Moody's. So after the project is completed, and the construction completed, and then leased up, the F, series F2, that's the bigger piece of $38 million of a shorter term, will be paid off. The longer piece, the F1 series, will undergo a conversion process, which comes at the technical part. So under the conversion process, the senior lender, Capital One, will underwrite a mortgage loan pursuant to the Fannie Mae delegated underwriting and servicing program. And this loan will be sold to Fannie Mae, and Fannie Mae consequently will issue a mortgage-backed security as cash enhancement, with the cash enhancement, oh, as credit enhancement. What the credit enhancement means, Fannie Mae will guarantee the principal and interest payments of this series to investors regardless of, regardless of the performance of the underlying mortgage loans. So that ends our presentation for this project. And then we ask for the council approval of the bond issuance for the Parkmore Apartments, and we're open for any questions.
Okay, great. Thank you for the staff presentation. Let's go to public comment.
Paul Soto.
Yes, Paul Soto from the Horseshoe. I don't really like to brag, but, no, that's a lie, I do. My research is accurate. If you look at those numbers, 115%, market rate housing, 25%, everybody else. We cannot any longer sustain those numbers. And the reason why I'm commenting on it is because it came up in this report. We cannot sustain that. What we're going to have to do as a city is to cap that 115% and bring it down to 50. Until we elevate that 25%, we need to elevate that to 60% over a three-year period. Once we have elevated that over a three-year period, sustained it, and meant only 60%, I'm not asking for 100, just maintain that at 60%, then we can revisit the policy of lifting the cap on the 50% of market rate housing. It has to be done. This isn't, this isn't an opinion, it's a fact. When you look at the economics, and when you look at what it is that the city has done, in terms of neglecting the people in the 25% population, it almost like mandates that we do that. That is what equity looks like. Equity looks like a policy that is set in place in order to give the people on the, in the 25% class, some breathing room. You cannot sustain that 115% over the next five years, and not expect the housing issue to go away. In fact, it's going to increase. It's going to exacerbate the amounts of homelessness and potential homelessness that the citizens are going to be experiencing. So while I applaud you in being able to build this, we also have to take into account that stark statistic, which I was 100% accurate on.
Rosio Molina.
Hello, council and staff. Rosio Molina here, interim Deputy Director with Catalyst SV. I want to congratulate the staff in the Office of Supportive Housing and PATH on a great project that they presented here today. Our members have scored the project, they've actually scored the project on multiple locations. As the project has developed, their score has increased. Our members have been particularly impressed with the community engagement and the commitment by the staff to connect with the community and hear their thoughts along the way. We think that that has, that process has added to the vibrancy of the project. And particularly, we would like to also thank Supervisor Chavez, Supervisor Ellenberg, and of course, the Office of Supportive Housing, as they have been advancing this distinct project that is going to service a crucial population. I think more permanent affordable housing projects are on all of our mind, in particular, following some of the conversations that the staff and the council have had in the last week or so around the need for more permanent supportive housing and permanent housing to meet the needs of our community. We look forward to supporting more projects like this that are accompanied with robust community engagement. We vehemently support community engagement connected with public projects in particular, and love to see the progress that this has made along the way. Thank you so much.
Back to the council.
Great, thank you. Councilwoman Davis?
Thank you, and I thank staff for the presentation. I have a couple of questions I just want to make sure are clear, because I'm not super clear on this. The city's contribution to this project is 16.8 million. I think we have that in cash. Why are we bonding 39.8 million, which is 20 million more?
The project itself will cost close to $80 million. So the funding source for this project is comprised of multiple sources. There is a city's housing loan of about $17 million. We're going to bond $40 million for the project. There is also a gap will be provided by other funding sources. The county also provided some sort of loan. The detail, the funding, funding source and use information is included in a memo, and the housing staff has more knowledge on that than I do.
Thank you. Rachel?
Yes, I just wanted to add. So the project, again, has multiple funding sources. We, the city has cash to fund our loan. That's correct. The bond is actually from the California Debt Limit Allocation Committee, SIDLAC, and so the project applied for an allocation of bonds from the state level, and the city actually issues those bonds, but they were, they're allocated from the state level. So the dollars that are being bonded are actually, the city is issuing them, but they're coming from the state.
Okay, thank you. So the state is backing them?
Oh, no. The debt payment for the, for the bonds are backed by the rental payment to the, for the building. So there will be no debt payment during the construction period. Once the conversion happened, there will be tax equity from investors to pay down the majority piece of the loan. That's about $38 million and plus. And then the remaining smaller piece, $2 million, will be amortized over a 15-year period after the conversion. And the debt payment technically will be coming from the rental payment from tenants. Those are calculated by the developers. They are guaranteed to pay it. But the caveat is, should the rental payment not coming up to be sufficient to pay the loan payment for the, pay the interest and principal payment of amortization for the $2 million, Fannie Mae will be guaranteed the payment to the investors.
Okay. So our 16.8, where does it fall in the repayment schedule versus the 39.8?
That's separate. So the 16 million payment should come in. I think that will be better addressed by the housing staff.
After construction is complete and the building is operational, according to the pro forma and the loan documents, we will get paid annually back on our loan. Every year, we will see payment from the cash flow on the project.
I understand that. I guess maybe I should ask a more direct question. So in the memo, it says abode will develop, own, and manage. Is abode going to be actually owning the property, or will the city, will the county retain ownership of that property?
The county will retain ownership of the property.
Okay. So just to be clear, the memo is not correct on that point. It says that abode will develop, own, and manage the project? So maybe I misread, maybe I misread the sentence, but it looked to me like they were going to own the property, and I don't think that's true.
I can, I just want to jump in. Okay. So the county will, will own, have interest on the fee for the land, and abode will own the building on the land.
Okay.
So for the, the project or the development, if you will, abode will own and manage the building.
Okay. And so the reason I'm asking all of these questions is, I, we, we have had an affordable housing developer falter in the last couple of years, and I just want to be clear about what we're doing and what we're taking on, because I don't know, we work with abode all the time. I think they're very nice people. I don't know anything about the strength of this nonprofit, just like I didn't know anything about the strength of the other nonprofit that has faltered since then. And so I'm kind of trying, what I'm trying to get at is, how, how certain are you, staff, and Rachel, I'm looking at you, because you've been around the longest, and I know you the best, in relation to these kinds of projects, how certain are you that abode is financially stable enough for that 16.8 to get paid back for us, but also for that 39.8, which we are, it sounds like we're putting out the proceeds, so we're on the hook for paying that back if they don't pay us. So that's why I'm asking all of these questions. And I get you guys are giving me the technical answers, but Rachel, that's what I want to know.
Okay. So I just want to clarify, first of all, that the, all of this debt is secured by the building and the development, and so it does not create any liability to the City of San Jose. So I just want to clarify that. And then, as far as what is my, you know, how do I think that this will perform, essentially? I do feel like this development has been very thoughtfully put together, and that over time, we do expect that it will perform. There are, we have several partners in this. We have several lenders who are very invested in this development. There are, there are 40 vouchers, 41 vouchers that are going to, that are on the development that actually help with cash flow over time. And so we feel confident that the, all of the financials for this development will, are the all of the financials for this development will are stable and secure and will remain in place over time.
Okay, thank you. I will move approval of 8.2.
Second. Okay, thank you, council member. Don't see any other hands. Let's vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, we are on to the report of the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a report today. It's with great excitement that I'd like to share that the city launched a new streamlined job application system in support of our Making San Jose a Great Place to Work foundational strategic support focus area. San Jose's upgraded system went live last week and is now providing a more user-friendly and efficient experience for job seekers throughout their application process. The city is continuing to hire from multiple positions across numerous departments, and this system will seamlessly connect interested users to desirable positions. Applicants can apply from any device, subscribe to receive job alerts, and the new system will auto-populate previously completed application information. The public can create an account to see new positions posted daily by visiting san jose ca.gov/jobs. I'd like to thank the multi-departmental team that collaborated to launch this modernized hiring platform, including human resources, information technology, and our various department stakeholders. The one-minute video that I'd like to share provides an overview of the new features for our easy-to-use job application system, and we really do encourage our community to apply for our jobs. All right, go ahead.
Looks like we're having some technical issues.
Is that, is that it, Kelly? Thank, Kelly, is that it? I said, is that the end of the video? Okay, it looks like it was having technical difficulties. So at least you got a sense of what it looks like. So there you go. Thank you.
Okay. Should we? Okay, I guess we'll move on.
I think you can move on. Thank you. But I want everybody to know about the the new launch, and it's it's really going to be easier for our job applicants.
That's great to hear. I'm excited to take a look at it. Okay, thank you, Jennifer. So we are on to item 3.3, Amendments to Title IV of the Muni Code related to procurement of goods and services. And I don't believe there's a staff presentation, so we will start with public comment.
Richard Ward. Paul Soto.
Yes, Paul Soto from the Horseshoe. That was a disgusting amount of money that has been like, especially Carrasco's office. I mean, are you serious? $50,000? I mean, we're talking Victoria's Secret, Amazon. I mean, come on, man. I mean, this is embarrassing. I mean, the the fact that you should be embarrassed, but you're not, speaks to the character and the integrity of my city. I don't like my city being called out like that. I don't like the fact that we have thieves. That's what you call it. You call it thieves because that is city money, that is our taxpayer dollars, and what they're doing is sitting there and say, oh, well, you know what? We could just grab at this and grab at it and grab at it. Nobody's going to bust us. Nobody's going to call the police. Nobody's going to arrest us because we all protect ourselves. You know, wink, wink, and yeah, I got you, brother. Don't even trip. You look that way, and I'll look this way, and we'll both start stealing from the city because that's what it is. It's not procurement. That's like saying that California was procured by the by the settlers. No, it wasn't. It was theft. It was stolen via war. And that same kind of war is being perpetuated upon the citizens of this city that work hard to provide the coffers with money in order for us to get services, not Carrasco's office. Not, I mean, that was disgusting. The one people, the one people that talk a lot about racial equity was the one office that was exploiting the system the most. That is embarrassing. That employee should embarrass, be embarrassed, and every single one of those employees that have been stealing from this city, you should hang your head in shame and quit your job because you're useless, and we don't need you anymore. We don't need thieves inside the city halls. Thank you.
Back to the council.
Thank you. Okay, turning back to my colleagues. Colleagues, do we have any comments or a motion?
I'll move to approve this item.
Second. Great, see no other hands. Let's vote.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, we're on to item 3.4, Report on Request for Bid for Citywide Desktops, Laptops, Tablets, and Servers. We'll start with public comment.
Paul Soto.
Paul Soto from the Horseshoe. In this era of equity, digital divide that was that was highlighted during COVID, I would suggest that we kind of just like bypass this portion. And the city, either all of the equipment that you're not going to use, it's still usable, that you donate that equipment to nonprofits, and that those nonprofits become the beneficiaries of this this new cycle. You want to buy some new stuff? All right, cool. But you need to create a system that balances the digital divide that was highlighted during COVID. And it was just highlighted, but it had been in existence for decades, and that was intentional. That was an intentional divide to deprive resources of certain communities, and because of that, it created educational deficiencies. And what the prison system did is it monetized those educational deficiencies because they were able to prove that if kids that were experiencing those kinds of educational deficiencies in the third grade, they knew scientifically how many prison beds they were going to have to create in the future. Now, I hope you got all that because it's very clear, very, very clear. Now, I want to hear some dialogue. I was very disappointed on that last item. Nobody had a thing to say about that? That was just like, wow. So on this one, and 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 cut some of Mayfair out. Just make sure that some of Mayfair doesn't get a cut of any of this. They've already got a $9 million budget, so they don't need computers. They've got enough. But any of the rest of these nonprofits, man, that these kids, they need this equipment, and you guys ain't using it anymore. Obviously, you're going to get some new stuff. So why don't you create a program here publicly that's going to ensure that these children in these modules are the beneficiaries of all this new equipment that you have? Thank you.
Richard Ward.
Hello.
Go ahead, Richard.
Yeah, so this is about giving laptops?
Yes.
All right. Let me see my headset off. So these laptops, public school laptops?
No, this item is a report on request for bid for citywide desktops, laptops, tablets, and servers.
Oh, for the workers?
Blair Beekman.
Hi, Blair Beekman here. For this item and for the previous item, you know, the just a reminder in the importance of practicing open public policies and accountability and civil protections with the technology involved in these projects. It's a good concept of procurement and that people will want to work with you more, and people will want to visit San Jose and 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 work with how you guys function if you consider good practices and really want to work on it with the community. That's that's the definition of a good community experience and how we develop ourselves as human beings. Thanks a lot.
Back to the council.
Okay, back to council. Vice Mayor Komen.
Thank you. Like most organizations, I would imagine that the council has a a policy on end-of-life cycle for many of the computers, laptops, whatever equipment that we have, and that we indeed do either donate them or provide a way of being able to recycle them out of of use. I know that for the San Jose Public Library, there's a whole system of how we have laptops and devices available for access to young people, community members, and they're tremendously accessible in that form. But I just wanted to make sure, you know, that we do have an account of the life cycle for for equipment and and use.
Great. Is there anyone from the administration who's able to comment on that?
Hello, Ed Kim, Deputy Director for ITD. Yes, we do actually have a five-year lifecycle. It's documented as a part of the IT standard, and that is actually processed through a standard surplus when it comes to any IT equipment.
And in terms of disposition, they're either donated or they go into recycle of some sort.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Next, Vice Mayor, would you like to move the item?
I'd move the item.
Second.
Okay, great. Second, Councilwoman Cohen, and next is Councilwoman Candelas.
Thanks, Mayor. I guess I had a question for staff on on the procurement process specific to, I know the 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 awardee in question got the local and small business enterprise preference, and I had a question on that. So specifically, my question is, you know, we give a credit, a portion of credit for for, you know, for for points for basically getting the contract. And so I guess what kind of validation or 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 things do we have in place to make sure that somebody just doesn't, you know, rent an office space, have, you know, an automated message at that local office and say they're a local business? I guess this would be a question for procurement, but I mean, I'll take that, any feedback you have, Rick.
Yes, thank you for the question, Rick Bruno, Director of Finance. Yes, we, the process for awarding the preference of local and small business is defined within our Muni Code, and that that identifies the criteria for which you can apply. And so for a local business, they need to be within the Santa Clara County location. They need to have an office with at least one employee working out of that office. And then for a small business, there needs to be 35 employees or less in total employees for their business.
Great. No, thank you. And I guess I think it's incredible that that we we and I think it's beneficial for our community to, when we do these contracts, that we keep these dollars locally and we are providing them to, I mean, everybody needs computers. Everybody needs servers to do their job. And so the fact that we are able to capitalize that and keep those dollars to a company that's here, I think it's excellent work, and and I'm happy to support the memorandum. I just wanted a little bit of a clarification on that because I know there's some concerns from folks who, because of the local preference to do that, since, I mean, if you look at the contract numbers, they're so tight, within 150,000, that 5% credit will put you over. And I just want to make sure that we are protecting against that so so we have real companies that are here and not just in face value saying that they're here, but they have, you know, half a person here and the other person in, you know, Utah. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that makes sense. That's correct.
Great. Thanks for highlighting that, council member. Councilwoman Dwan?
Thank you, Mayor. I echo Councilmember Candelas. Because when I hear it's only one employee for qualification, that's concerning because we want to make sure that that company is not just one, a middleman that pushes the products out to somewhere not within our county and not having businesses here besides just being a middleman. My other question for you guys is 8.25 million dollars over the period of approximately seven years. And that break down to a little bit over a million dollar per year. Am I correct?
Thank you, Council. Thank you, Councilmember Albi Udum, Deputy Director of Finance in Charge of Practice and Risk Management. That actually is for one year.
Okay, I apparently up to 601-year extension. Okay, got it. Now, with all the technology that we have here and the large amount of departments and employee throughout the city of San Jose, would that bring our technology up to par within the next two to five years?
I think that question is better answered by Ed Kim from our IT department.
Thank you, Councilmember Ed Kim, ITD Deputy Director. Yes, that is correct. The predominant purpose around this funding is to bring all of our equipment that is legacy up to supporting the latest operating system, which will bring us up to compliance when it comes to security and also modernization.
I know that a lot of our equipment, when it gets old, it surplus out. But I would highly suggest that we we do some type of program that we can donate this equipment to library and schools and even charter school for that matter to to help out our citizens. Do you have any plan in the future for that?
There have been discussions specifically around that. I think the main concern that we are addressing when it comes to donations is specifically around the risks that are involved with legacy equipment that could potentially there are issues when it comes to cybersecurity that some of the older technology does not support. And so this is where we would not want to address additional risk as part of that donation. So those are some of the considerations.
Okay. And I appreciate that IT department being doing a great job. When I came to office, some of my equipment is over five years old. So it was, number one, the security was out of compliance, and the equipment was old and slow. So thank you for your good work. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, council member. Okay, I don't see any other hands. Let's vote.
Motion passes.
Great, thank you. All right, we're on to item 4.1, Rearrest of High-Risk Individuals and Inter-Agency Coordination on Pre-Trial Release Status Report. We do have a staff presentation. We'll get started as soon as folks are ready.
Good afternoon. My name is Captain Steve Donahue. I'm the commander of the Southern Division at the San Jose Police Department. Today, I'll be providing a status report on the rearrest of high-risk individuals and inter-agency coordination on pre-trial release. I'm accompanied by my partner, Captain Brian Spears of the Support Services Division. He's taken over the inter-agency coordination on pre-trial release from former captain, now Deputy Chief Jaime Jimenez. And after this meeting, he'll be the point of contact for high-frequency offenders as well. I'm also accompanied by our county partner, Deputy District Attorney Jose Fuentes. I'm also accompanied by our county partner, Deputy District Attorney Jose Fuentes, sorry, Josue Fuentes. DDA Fuentes and his team have been great allies in this effort, and he'll be able to answer any questions you may have for the District Attorney's Office regarding our collaboration. Since April 2022, the city has committed to having intentional engagement with key stakeholders across jurisdictions to leverage the strengths, information, and data required to formulate a long-term, sustainable solution to the problem of detaining high-risk individuals and repeat offenders. Efforts were focused in June 2022, and a joint meeting took place in September 2022 between the Public Safety, Finance, and Strategic Support Committee and the Santa Clara County Public Safety and Justice Committee. Now, while the joint meeting was successful in building relationships and identifying some key takeaways that would further focus efforts, a memorandum from former Vice Mayor Jones in 2022 provided five points of specific direction. Stakeholder meetings took place December through March, and we provided updates to the Public Safety, Finance, and Strategic Support Committee in April and June of this year. The direction from former Vice Mayor Jones had five main points as listed on this slide. The first three have to do with what we are calling bail reform, and we've completed those three directives. And the last two revolve around mental health, substance abuse, and reentry. We've completed them and are continuing to work with our county partners throughout the county, including governmental, non-governmental, and community-based organizations. Our approach was to bifurcate the responsibilities for addressing the issues laid out in the direction, and in doing so, we're able to simultaneously allocate assets to both aspects. My predecessor, Captain Matchit, and I took on bail reform while Deputy Chief Jimenez took on alternatives to arrest. And we call my side bail reform, but it's not about reforming bail amounts or costs so much as it is about reforming the bail process and communications. Please note that these two aspects of pre-trial release are totally independent concepts that do not intermingle. So we convened a meeting of all the stakeholders listed on this slide, and we quickly learned, however, the three stakeholders on the right did not need to be part of the bail reform conversation. All three are involved in pre- or post-incarceration, while bail reform is more about whether or not there should be incarceration prior to trial. The meetings discussed bail limits and community needs for keeping people in custody, and we also discussed OR. Now, OR is when someone's released on their own recognizance. So this means they're released from custody prior to trial with charges against them pending. The decision to release someone is based on three main factors. One, the bail schedule. Two, state law. And three, a threat assessment. And in Santa Clara County, we use the Public Safety Assessment Tool, which is a proprietary assessment that estimates the likelihood of three things. One, failure to appear in court pre-trial. Two, a new criminal arrest while on pre-trial release. And three, a new violent criminal arrest while on pre-trial release. Now, to do this, the tool looks at the current offense, the age of the offender, the pending charges, and their prior offenses, where violence weighs heavier than non-violence and prior failures to appear weigh heavier than appearances. Ultimately, every defendant is given a score on this assessment tool, and that score is used as a factor to decide whether or not they should be released on their own recognizance. On March 25, 2021, bail changed throughout the state when the California Supreme Court ruled it is unconstitutional to hold someone in custody solely because they are unable to pay bail. You may have heard bail hearings called Humphrey hearings, but they're not actually separate hearings. They can occur throughout the judicial process. For example, they're often at the first setting of bail, called the arraignment, but they can be at any subsequent bail setting hearing. Now, with the Humphrey decision, the bail schedule was not changed, but the process was not, I'm sorry, the process was also not changed. What was changed was the requirement to look at the suspect's ability to pay bail. So turning back now to bail reform, we had two focuses: inter-agency coordination and the rearresting of high-risk individuals. In particular, we targeted those who would repeatedly commit crimes, were arrested, were released before trial, and who committed crimes again. Aside from their normal day-to-day operations apprehending high-risk offenders, the covert response unit was able to rearrest people in three cases, while our Special Operations Division made 12 cases. When we examined the expenditures for rearresting high-risk individuals, we discovered only $60,000 of the originally allotted $300,000 were spent on overtime to address these subjects. So this brings us to our alternative proposal for how these remaining funds may be spent. In the beginning of May, we held a meeting with stakeholders from the city, the District Attorney's Office, the Sheriff's Office, and the judiciary to discuss how we could address high-frequency offenders. Now, this would not just address those who are high-risk, but those who monopolize an extraordinary amount of time, energy, and resources for the city and county. Unfortunately, I'm sorry, ultimately, we would like to reallocate the remaining $240,000 to address high-frequency offenders and the root causes of their interactions with the criminal justice system. And to do so, we will return to Public Safety, Finance, and Strategic Support Committee in our bi-monthly report with a proposal for a pilot project. It's our intention to collaborate with the city, county, judiciary, and community-based organizations to develop an innovative strategy that will reduce the need to rearrest offenders multiple times, thereby enhancing public safety. Now, with approval of this new direction, we'll have four significant outcomes in bail reform. First, we made, we made material improvements to the forms used when booking individuals into jail. In the past, the allotted space and the lack of direction were insufficient to provide enough detail to judges to increase or mitigate bail. I'm happy to announce that we have redeveloped those forms and are currently using them in a pilot program with the county. This program will run for the next three months, at which time we're hoping the new forms will be implemented countywide. Two, we have improved relationships and communication between all the stakeholders. This is being done through continued meetings and especially while working together to change the affidavit of probable cause form. Three, we've integrated training into the pilot program and will continue to do so with our stakeholders to ensure the judiciary has all the information necessary to make sound decisions on bail. And finally, with your direction today, we'll be working on innovative steps to address high-frequency offenders. All right, I'm going to change gears here a little bit and talk about alternatives to arrest. As you may recall, this is a totally independent aspect of pre-trial release. While bail reform, high-risk offenders, and high-frequency offenders all involve someone booking, being booked into jail, this is the idea that we do not book that person, but we find alternatives to arresting them altogether. When we look at these alternatives, we need to recognize crime, your bottom-right circle on this diagram is always going to be a factor. However, there may be an intersection with substance abuse on the bottom left, mental illness on the top, or perhaps a combination of all three. Initially, we convened the stakeholders listed on this slide as a core group with an investment in the outcome of creating alternatives to arrest, and we quickly realized there were numerous projects and other groups taking on different aspects of alternatives to incarceration. So we brought each of them in to teach the core stakeholders what they were doing, what was working, what could be improved upon, and where we all fit in. For example, collaborating, collaborating with Veterans Affairs gave us a deeper and more meaningful understanding of our service members and their interactions with the criminal justice system. From that, we are focusing on these five areas, including diversions, integrating an existing form for better communication, and most importantly, collaboration with not just the core stakeholders, but the groups we brought in as well. We are working on our action item development, prioritizing them, and implementing them as we go. This is not one of those start-finish projects. It's an ever-evolving project that we learn and we try new things. We have our partners providing opportunities to seek alternatives to incarceration for those who can most benefit from them, not as a second chance, but as a different chance. And now, we're here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Just before we go to public comment, I really want to thank all of you who have been working on this cross-agency collaboration, starting with Lee Wilcox, of course, who I know has helped coordinate our efforts, and Captain Donahue, Deputy Chief, and many, many others I know, Captain Spears, of course, and our friends at the county, Josue, thank you for being here. I think over the last year, we've made, as, as Captain Donahue pointed out, a lot of progress in just improving our communication and coordination across many different agencies who have different pieces of this puzzle and already have some tangible wins, including this improved form that we're testing right now. So I think it's a, it's a great moment for the council to get this update. I want to thank the Chair of our PIS-FIS Committee, Councilmember Jimenez, for ensuring that we referred this to council and, and made us all aware of this, of this important update on the progress that's been made. But I've been happy to see the level of dialogue between all these different stakeholders, and I know we're going to get better outcomes by working more closely together. So I just wanted to express some gratitude before we come back for council deliberation. Let's go to public comment first.
Paul Soto.
Yes, Paul Soto from the Horseshoe. Thank you for that report, Captain Donahue. I've went a few rounds with you at these meetings, but, and I mean this as a, as a compliment with no sarcasm, that was an excellent, accurate report that didn't embellish nothing. You didn't add anything, and you didn't subtract anything. And so I want to thank you for, if all of your reports could be like this one, I would, as a citizen, appreciate it in terms of my social justice work, and I mean that. The only thing that I would like to challenge you on is that you're using the word crime. Now, there's a presumption, there's a presumption of innocence, even if a person reoffends while they're out on bail. This person is still innocent until proven guilty. That's number one. Number two is that you already have, you're, you're, you're asking for the 240 grand to do some work on, you know, finding root causes. Now, we're, we don't, we already have that information. That data is already accessible by the police departments, and you can get it from the county. You can get that information from the county. So the, I guess the only kind of critique that I would have as a, as a, as a person that has been impacted by the injustice criminal system and the injustices that have been created by the District Attorney's Office when they started abusing the three-strikes law and sending people to prison for 25 years' lives for a bag of dope, you know, I, I'm a part of that era. So there's been a lot of abuses of the law in the language in the law. So the only thing that I would ask is, you already have the information. The other component, key component factor that you didn't factor into the causes of crime is poverty. You didn't factor that in. And so I'm asking is that, that you factor in poverty and you put the redlining map on the values where the people live that are most high-risk, and you will see exactly what I'm talking about in the generational context.
Andrew, followed by Rosie.
My name is Andrew Bigelow. I'm organizer of Silicon Valley debug, and I just wanted to, one of my comments to essentially ask the, the city council if they could please consider not giving the additional leftover resources to the police, to the SJP. This concept of creating specialized, you know, funding to be able to search, to be able to find people and rearrest people who have warrants, most likely for FTAs and failure to appears, this is a, this is a, it's pretty, it's pretty dramatic and, and, and is already going to criminalize and hurt people who are probably already struggling and dealing with something else. This is not going to prevent more crime or, or whatever those kind of statements are. So I want to, I want to please ask the city council to consider not allocating this money to San Jose PD and, and literally, please put it anywhere else outside of that. Thank you.
Rosie, followed by Sharice. Rosie. Sharice.
My name is Sharice Domingo, and I'm with Silicon Valley debug. We submitted a letter this morning with deep concerns about the memo and the process that the city council and SJP went through, which is based on the false premise that one, bail reform is the cause of high crime, and two, the covert unit of SJP is quote, "well-equipped" to handle these quote, "high-risk offenders." The theme that binds these two issues together is grounded in racist stereotypes that black and brown people, particularly men of color, should be feared, and that is up to, it is up to law enforcement to control, lock up, and sometimes even kill. Debug families who lost loved ones to police violence have been harmed by members of the covert unit who have killed their family members, Jacob Dominguez, Demetria Stanley, David Tovar Jr. These men were all fathers, sons, brothers who were denied their day in court within seconds of encountering SJP. We urge you to reject this report, and if the city council is truly invested in addressing quote, "failures to appear in court," we urge you to not allocate the rest of the funding to the police. Suspend the use of the, of the new law enforcement risk sheet and work with community organizations with, from directly impacted communities and the Santa Clara County Pre-Arraignment Unit of the Public Defender's Office, who have been implementing real holistic and community-based solutions.
Blair, followed by Liz.
Hi, Blair Beifman. Thanks a lot for the words of Andrew Bigelow on this item, along with the consent calendar item that Councilperson Jimenez asked about today. It's a pretty lethal combination what you're offering possibly today on this council agenda. We've tried to really build a future that we really question, the future of predictive policing, and it should be questioned, it should be a conversation that should be open in, in our public meeting space. With this sort of item, you know, we, we wanted to, to address recidivism for a long time, and we're, we're making efforts, say, in, in, in mental health efforts also, that work at the county level, that, as what Paul said, it's not, it's important not to think of things as criminalizing the process, but how we can think of possibly mental health and, and counseling services and, and good practices to, to better address these issues. It's these sort of things that I hope we can learn how to better talk about in, in the specifics of what you're working on here, and as the police did try to offer a certain feeling, a sense of how to want, and wanting to better address this issue himself, it sounds like, and define, you know, our best practices. So good luck in these efforts. I think you're hearing some interesting public comment on the subject. I hope you can really address this as a city council today. Thank you for this item.
Liz.
Hi, my name is Liz Gonzalez. I'm a part of Silicon Valley debug, and I support and work with families who lost loved ones to covert units, who besides showing such little regard for our communities' lives, to use the presenter's own words, monopolize time, energy, and resources. They should not receive more money. It would be better spent anywhere else. We are asking you to suspend the use of the law enforcement risk sheet and involve impacted communities in these solutions so that it feels genuine, because this process does not feel genuine or guided by facts and reality. Please reject this report.
Paul Miller. Paul Miller. Rosie.
Hi, hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, my name is Rosie Chavez, and I am organizer with Silicon Valley debug and the aunt of Jacob Dominguez, who was murdered by the San Jose covert response unit. The experience our family has gone through of losing my nephew by the covert unit has been unbearable and a difficult loss. The only kind of justice we received was by filing a civil suit. Finding them liable for using excessive force and causing his murder proved how this unit moves and works and how they seem to think they can do and undo and continue to terrorize our communities. The covert unit is a death squad that is harmful to our people in our community. There should not be such a unit in existence that continue in murdering our loved ones. Not another family should have to lose their loved ones in the hands of this death squad. We don't need funding for this unit. How much of our tax dollars is going to, into civil suits and complaints for this unit? They cause more harm, leaving families and children left behind, broken and traumatized with no accountability. Fund and work on supporting our community and youth by providing trauma-informed services. Listen to your community. We have to do better, San Jose. Thank you.
We have an in-person speaker surrender. Please go ahead and make your way to the podium. We have an in-person speaker, Surrender. Please go ahead and make your way to the podium.
Good afternoon. I'm Surrender. I've been using a lot of AI recently to do my own research, and like to share with you all. The United States has the highest incarceration rate in the world, with over 2 million people in prison. This means that for every 100,000 people in the United States, 622 are incarcerated. Looking at Santa Clara County, for the last few decades, incarceration has increased. The incarceration rate in Santa Clara was 250 per 100,000 people in 2001. By 2017, the incarceration rate had increased to 350 per 100,000 people in Santa Clara County. So if you're, those that are not in jail, there's still lots of families outside that are impacted. I've been to jail now three times. They sometimes don't even offer you water, and they give you really gross snacks that are unhealthy when you're in there. I'm glad to be free though now. Have a nice night.
Back to our Zoom speakers. Kyle? Kyle?
Yes, hello?
Go ahead, Kyle.
Yeah, hi. I just wanted to bring to light that Jews suck, baby.
Paul Miller?
Jews suck, baby, Pete.
Hello?
Paul Miller, go ahead. Raj?
Good afternoon. This is Raj I with Silicon Valley debug. I was calling in to respond to this memo that is based on a crisis created and invented by a fear-mongering campaign by police, by the mayor, by the former mayor, and the police union, to invent the idea that bail reform has created an escalation in violent crime. That's evidenced by the memo itself, that is a bait and switch. It's based on a fear-mongering campaign that says that people released from jail are going to commit more violent crimes. And so the police were allocated $300,000 to arrest, what they said, "high-risk violent felonies who flee court." The actual proposal to use, is to use 80% of that money to figure out how to incarcerate high-frequency arrestees, people that are unhoused, people with mental health and substance use disorders and issues. Clearly, this is just a campaign from police to increase incarceration and increase pre-trial detention. That is why we're asking that the remaining $240,000 not be allocated to police. If even the supplementary memo by other council members stated they're interested in alternatives to incarceration, it should go through other avenues besides law enforcement. It's illogical for law enforcement to coordinate an alternative incarceration, use of allocation of resources, when that's primarily what they're set up to do. And lastly, it was shocking to me that the police and the District Attorney's Office was allowed to change the booking procedure sheet to something that is written and tilted solely to increase pre-trial detention. Police are not judges, they're not lawmakers, and they can't respond to litigative and legislative changes in state law simply by expanding whatever powers they assume they have. We are also calling it not only suspension of that worksheet, but a reallocation of those resources, and an inclusion also of community in this future discussion.
Raymond?
Yes, good afternoon. I'm Ray McGoins, and I'm with Silicon Valley debug. Before, I'd like to ask a question. Basically, why are we spending money to rearrest people and continue to keep the community I come from in a state of constant fear due to being actively haunted by law enforcement? I can tell you that feeling of being haunted by gang members who are protected by the shield is not one that's just a comfort. So you guys spend a lot of money to continue forcing the police, police our communities, and to continue locking us up on the premises for safety and security, when you got, and the police officers, officers, associations, unions involved in these discussions, when you actually have the executive of the Police Officers Association, who retired now, on bail, no bail, for selling fentanyl in our community. Now, tell my community how is that fair to them, when you guys continue to make new proposals and want new funding to arrest us, and find reasons and ways to arrest us, but you're not finding reasons and ways to arrest the people who are impacting our community and putting the drugs and guns in our communities? Why are we not looking at the bigger picture, and why are you, why are you guys funding your movement or your thought process on the lives of people who can't fend for themselves? I think, coming from somebody who was victimized and haunted by the police, who was kidnapped off the streets of Santa Clara County and sent to a slave plantation, it's not something that's best for our community. It's just not. And there's nothing more I can say. I think the city of San Jose could do better. It's supposed to be a democratic city. We could do better.
Hugh Logan?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. So, talking about the police, right?
Yes.
Okay. So, we really need to figure out why our communities are stricken with this horrible crime situation. But we don't, I don't believe we need more police, or militarization of law enforcement. We need to enforce the laws that we already have, and to get rid of the George Soros puppet district attorneys. Why does 13% of the population commit 50% of the crime? Why is the majority of rapes committed by black men? I'm not saying...
Kevin? Brian Darby?
Hi.
Hello, can you hear me, ma'am?
Yes.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank you for monitoring. You have a very hard job. I'm not really sure how I feel about this, but I know, you know, I had a family member that were, that got in trouble with the law. This is back in the late 60s and 70s and 80s and 90s, sad to say. They're no longer alive. But police are put at a hard point. The people who are incarcerated are put at a hard point. And there's more of a systemic issue. But I have to agree that there is, at least you're letting us talk it out. This is a good conversation. I'm not sure if the putting high bail back helps. I mean, we have more people incarcerated than anybody, I think, in the West, or actually maybe in the world. I'm not sure about China. But it, there's got to be a better way, and I don't have the answers, otherwise I'd be running for office now. Anyways, but mainly to the moderator, thank you for, these conversations can get hard. Have a nice day.
Kevin?
Yeah, I tried to speak, and you unmuted me. You muted me.
We can hear you, Kevin.
You there?
Go ahead.
Well, it's disgusting. You guys censor free speech just because niggers are raping and fucking kites.
You cannot disrupt, please.
Wayne?
Fuck yourself.
Back to the council.
Councilmember Ortiz?
Thank you, Vice Mayor, and definitely appreciate our city staff for being quick there on the mute button. We do not tolerate hate speech here with the city of San Jose. First, I want to thank the chief, who's not here, but our leadership from the San Jose Police Department, who's here presenting this item, and all the other departments that worked closely with them. I'm looking forward to hear back on how we can move in a progressive and efficient direction with regards to high-frequency offenders. As the memo said, the people who are being arrested the most are usually suffering from chronic mental health or substance abuse issues. I see this very closely in my district. I mean, it's clearly ineffective to continue to arrest and release people, and just hope they'll magically be recidivized or improved, right? However, I also see, on the east side and in my district, many of our immigrant small businesses are becoming prey to robberies, to windows being broken, to snatch and grabs, and that's not okay as well. So there's many factors that I weigh when I talk about items like this. And I think the devil is in the details for a high-utilizer policy, and it's imperative that we really tackle the root cause of dangerous behavior, right? The root cause. And to that end, I do have a couple questions, so that I could get an understanding of where the department's head is as it explores the potential programs. So, Seattle's High Utilizer Initiative has involved keeping more people in jail for misdemeanors. That's essentially what it's resulted in. As many of our high-repeat offenders are especially vulnerable, are we working with county jail staff to make sure anything that we do won't cause significant deterioration of health and safety conditions in the jails?
Thank you for your question, councilmember. Yes, the short answer to that is yes. We are working with our county partners in the jail staff. We're working with the judiciary. We're working with the District Attorney's Office, and we are absolutely looking at the long-term effects of whatever the plan will be at the time, right? We still have some work to do to develop that plan, which is why we're saying we'll come back to the Public Safety Finance and Strategic Support Committee with the proposal. So we will bring forward something that examines that kind of long-term effect of what we are, what we are planning on putting into process.
The San Francisco and Los Angeles assisted diversion programs involve partnerships not just across city and county agencies, but also community-based organizations with expertise on drug treatment and community representatives involved in the conversation. As you look at models that include alternatives to incarceration, I think that's what we all want, you know, alternatives to incarceration, but also to address crime in our neighborhoods. Are there groups with expertise on mental health, substance use treatment, or just overall reimagination of the carceral system that will be, you know, at the table with you guys during this planning, or who you would like to have at the table with you guys?
Thank you. Yes. The short answer again is yes. There's absolutely going to be stakeholders in all different aspects of this, whether it be through drug treatment, through mental health services. We can use county behavioral health services. We have the opportunity to look outside of the carceral system, if you will, to be able to find those resources that can have the most impact, and be able to provide the most support to the people that we're serving.
Okay. Is there broad community engagement being done at this moment?
At this moment, no. There's not broad community engagement being done. Right now, we are in the process of bringing it back to you at council. Then we are going to meet with our county partners and stakeholder groups. There is going to be community engagement in this process, but it is, we're just at the very beginning stages.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We don't have that yet.
If I can jump in, I mean, I think one of the reasons we wanted to partner with the county as well is their work plan around alternatives to incarceration. The county has done a tremendous amount of outreach, working with those nonprofit organizations. So this is an opportunity for us to kind of meet with them and see what's been done thus far as well, so we're not necessarily repeating that work, but more partnering with them.
And, you know, there may be organizations who, regardless of what we do, they may not be happy with it, but I think it's important to have these organizations at the table, especially like NAACP, the Black Kitchen Cabinet, and other groups that represent communities who have been impacted by, you know, the over-incarceration of populations in the city, to be at that table to make sure that, you know, as we move away from mass incarceration, that's exactly what we do. And then I just had a question. I heard, you know, comment, public comment. They were saying that we're going to be utilizing a specific unit that may have been involved in some loved ones who lost their life, regardless. I don't, I don't know the details. Is there a specific reason why we're using that unit? Is there another one we could use, or?
So, the, many of the public commenters spoke about the Covert Response Unit. That's our Bureau of Investigations undercover unit that's tasked with taking into custody high-risk offenders. For example, somebody commits a robbery where someone's shot, they're going to go try to find that person and take them into custody. That's their job. The reason that they're mentioned in this is they were in the original plan to try to rearrest high-risk offenders back in the, when the original plan was developed, and we were using our Covert Response Unit and our Special Operations Division, such as Merge, our SWAT team, or our Violent Crimes Enforcement Team, that kind of stuff. So that's where they came into this, but they're not part of the high-frequency offender movement going forward. So they were part of high risk, and as we shift the direction into high-frequency offenders, that I don't foresee Crew having a place in that at this particular time. That could change in the future, but where we see this going, not right now.
That's great. Appreciate the clarification. Thank you, and I'll wait to listen to my colleagues in regards to the memo. Thank you.
Thanks, councilmember. Let's go to Councilman Jimenez.
Yeah, thank you. I'll be moving the memo, but let me just first say that for some of the callers that were calling, critiquing effectively the criminal justice system, I think we can all agree that the criminal justice system is not perfect. It certainly needs a lot of work all around this country, around the state, some say in the county. As a matter of fact, I just got an email from Supervisor Semidian, where he's actually screening a film called $100 a Day, which tells the story of Rick Walker, a man convicted of a crime he didn't commit, for which he was in prison for more than a decade. You don't need to look too far, too much further than news clippings of, you know, newspapers across this country where things like that have happened. So that happens. That's real. I also know what's real is obviously some of the crime that's going on, people getting killed, things of that nature, businesses being robbed. I mean, that's also true. And so that's sort of the space that we're working in here. It's really the gray space, the nuance, in which we're, I think, and what I look forward to continuing to see, is that we, as a police department, as a city, continue to take a very nuanced, thoughtful approach to addressing some of the things we see in our community, such as folks that are continuously being rearrested and trying to figure out exactly how we plug that hole, if you will, while at the same time recognizing that incarceration, purely incarceration, is just isn't going to do the trick. Because if that was going to do the trick, that would have happened already for a lot of these individuals. And so that's why I've been supportive of the efforts that you all have been working on. It's, it always pleases me to see the collaboration between the city and the county. I think in the past years, we've had a contentious relationship to a certain extent, and to the extent those walls can be broken down, and you all, as a police department, we as councilmembers, Public Safety Committee, the Justice Committee at the county, can get together and try to find solutions to this, I think is very, very important. I would also say, I know Councilmember Ortiz mentioned the Seattle study. I know the mayor and I have talked very briefly about the Seattle study. I haven't reviewed it. I haven't personally decided whether it's a good thing or a bad thing, but I think that's one of the reasons we want to have that meeting, because I'd be curious what the county's going to think. They may say, "Great idea, let's do that." Or they may say, "You know what, actually, we can do it better. Or we're uniquely different." It may or may not apply. And so that's why I'm supportive of the memo. Obviously, I signed on to it. It really gives us the opportunity to direct city staff, to work with the county staff, to bring a meeting together. I've already been in conversations with Supervisor Ellenberg to try to figure out a date that works for all. I would encourage each and every councilmember, the public that has commented, to join us during that meeting, so you can chime in, hear, listen, learn a little bit more about what's going to be happening. And I really don't know what the outcome of that meeting is going to be, or what it's going to produce, but I think having a conversation is always super important. And so I'm encouraged by the efforts and look forward to bringing that together when we have that joint meeting. The only question I have, Captain, is when do you think that the pilot, the proposal is going to come to Public Safety Committee?
This is where I get to defer to my partner, Captain Spears.
I just need a little time, maybe with the next 60 days.
All right, okay. It's a little quicker than I expected, but, which is good. It's good. But what I'm curious about, do you have any sense or feelings about the timing of bringing that forward as it relates to the timing of the county-city meeting? Would you, would you, are you interested in seeing that meeting take place first, and then bringing it forward, or bringing that forward?
Yes, definitely. I prefer to participate in that collaboration than, you know, that way we hear everybody's, you know, everyone's input, and then we can progress forward.
Okay, all right. I appreciate it. And I'll, before I make the motion, let me just also say that it's very important to me that all stakeholders are engaged, right? We've got the Sheriff's Department, DA's Department... We've got the sheriff's department, DA's department, of course, our police department, county administration. In my mind, a very important partner, and another sort of slice of the expertise in the field is the public defender's office. And so I, I look forward to hearing their thoughts and, which may or may not differ from our approach, which is okay, but I think as we've always, we always strive to have a very objective, balanced sort of presentation and, and participation. And so during those county meetings, I expect that they're going to be participating and hopefully give us a very, a well-rounded sort of an understanding and perspective as it relates to the impacts of some of these decisions we're going to be making. So with that, I'll stop talking. I'll make the motion to approve the memo authored by Councilmember Foley, Councilmember Torres, Mayor Mahan, and myself.
Great. Thank you, council member. Appreciate you adding all that context. Councilwoman Torres.
Thank you so much for, for that presentation. And of course, it's, it's always important to, to make sure that we, we are addressing the concerns of members of our public, right? The ones not disrupting this meeting with their negative comments, of course. And so for me, just like Councilmember Jimenez, I, I signed on to the memo that I will, supporting with Mayor Mahan and Councilmember Foley, because we're including behavioral, behavioral health. I think that's extremely important. As, as someone, I think I've mentioned it time and time again, as, as someone who, who's had substance abuse problems my whole life, and now I'm in recovery, you know, addiction is a disease, right? Drinking and, and using drugs is a disease, and it's, it's not a crime. And so for me, signing on to this memo, I want to make sure that I'm, that we're holding our SJPD, our partners accountable when it, when it comes to making sure that folks are getting the, the right treatment when it comes to, when it comes to substance abuse. And so that's one of the reasons why, why I signed on to the memo. And so I, I'm very happy to hear that we're going to start doing community meetings about this. I think that's extremely important. The, I just have one question before I yield my time. If some of these offenders fit into the scope to get help from San Jose Yea, we connect them to those resources, correct?
Thank you for your question, council member. Yes, San Jose Yea offenders typically are juveniles, right? So when that happens, they, they are not falling underneath this particular program that we're using. This is for booking into the main jail, and we are using our resources and our collaboration with our county partners to address that in other ways through San Jose Yea and mitigating the circumstances that surround those juveniles.
Great, yeah. And, and, and there was a reason why I asked that question, right? Because we all know, for some of us who lived during the era of mass incarceration, that it didn't work, right? And so it's very important for our repeated offenders who, who, who are of under age get the services they need. So thank you so much.
Great. Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Foley?
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation, Captain Donahue and Captain Spears. It's good to see you both. I'm sorry I was late. I just got removed from jury duty. Interesting story, I'll tell you later. And I appreciate the comments of my colleagues. I, they've already actually asked the questions that I was going to ask, but I just want to reiterate how important public safety is to our community and that we're focusing on public safety and making our community as safe as we possibly can with the limited resources that, that we have. So I thank you for your focus on that, and I was proud to be a part of this memo and sign on with this memo as well. Thank you for being here.
Great. Thanks, council member. Appreciate all my colleagues' comments, and I, I think the, the good news is, I think we all agree that simply resetting the policies from five, 10, 20 years ago isn't the solution. I think what the spirit of this is, and this is really a status update on work that's ongoing with our county, our mini-county partners, as the, as the visual indicated, is that we need to keep pushing ourselves to figure out how we find the appropriate interventions and rehabilitation models for those who currently we see are slipping through the cracks. And to me, the most obvious place, at least when it comes to the criminal justice system that we're seeing that is with a, to start at least, a fairly small group of people, just in the data since the end of zero bail last year, on the order of 60-some individuals, where we're seeing a very high rate of rearrest. And the question, I think, before us, but it really is, is as much or more before our county partners, but we want to have a seat at the table and help convene, is what's a better intervention? What, what is it that is leading to these folks slipping through the cracks? Because I think we all agree, it's not fair to them. They need help, often with mental illness, including addiction. And it's not fair to the broader community, to the neighbors, to the small business owners, to the kids walking to school, et cetera. And so the question really, I think, without any of us knowing exactly what the answer is or where we're going to land in this conversation, is how can we draw on all of our diverse disciplines and, and experiences and the resources we have to at least focus in initially on, on that group of individuals and figure out what's a better intervention that's going to get them the help that they need so that we don't continue to see that pattern, and also do a better job of reducing impacts on the community, which is, of course, a huge part of our responsibility in government, is that safety for the broader community. So it's a tough balancing act. We've got to figure out how to be really holistic and thoughtful in our approach, but clearly the current system isn't perfect and has gaps, and I think it's that recognition that's our, that's actually our starting point here, which I think is very healthy. So appreciate the collaboration from colleagues on the memo. Again, this is just kind of a status update, a, a point in time along this journey we've been on, and I'm excited to have our next joint meeting with the county on this, as I think the last one was actually quite productive and led to some tangible improvements. So with that, let's vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Great. Thank you, and thanks to everybody who's been working on these, on these issues. Okay, we are on now to item 6.1, which is the ordinance amending titles 2, 4, and 26 and adding Title 28 to the San Jose Municipal Code to establish a municipal utility for electric service. We have a fairly robust staff presentation that we'll start with, and then we'll go to public comment.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the community and stakeholders. I'm Kip Harkness, Deputy City Manager. Joining me at the table today are Lori Mitchell and Jim Caldwell, who will also be assisting with this presentation. And then I believe joining us virtually from her vacation in Europe will be Nancy Klein in a little bit. So before we begin, I just want to set the stage for this. As we respond to the threat of climate change by shifting away from fossil fuels, we are in the midst of a once-in-a-generation transformation of the electrical energy system across the United States, and particularly here in California and in San Jose, where we lead the effort to be carbon neutral by 2030. This transformation is being driven by the electrification of our buildings and the uses in them, especially getting rid of gas, particularly for heating, the electrification of transportation, and the switch to electric vehicles, and most fundamentally, the shift in power generation to renewable and non-greenhouse gas-producing electricity, primarily in the form of solar, wind, hydro, geothermal, and supporting battery storage. Taken together, this means more electricity, dramatically more electricity will be needed than ever before, and where that energy is needed and produced will also shift. All of this will radically alter the demands on the system and the form of the electrical power production, transmission, and distribution systems. Like any transformation, this transformation of the electrical system creates both risks and opportunities. Risks include the status quo being unable to meet the pace and scope of change. Opportunities include the opportunities for new and innovative approaches. One of these opportunities for us has been the formation of our own San Jose Clean Energy, which we scaled from nothing five years ago to now managing 124 contracts for power production valued at approximately $2.98 billion. That's billion with a B. San Jose Clean Energy produces cleaner energy at a lower cost than PG&E and is building a reserve that in the coming year will allow us to begin significant investments in a range of programs supporting the city and our community in transitioning, transitioning to this electrical future. Today, we bring forward for your consideration and direction another potential opportunity we call San Jose Power. We are asking today for changes to the municipal code that would allow us to continue in an exploratory phase to determine if San Jose Power is worth pursuing. In particular, in this exploratory phase, we will ask and answer four key questions that should be addressed before beginning to scale any new electrical service. One, will this reduce electrical energy costs for the consumer? Two, will it allow for the development of more innovative and energy-efficient buildings such as those envisioned in the planned Downtown West development? Three, will it increase the resilience of the city of San Jose at our critical infrastructure for both climate change and emergency response? In this case, with particular attention to the airport and the regional wastewater facility areas, which will be critical in any large-scale emergency such as an earthquake. And finally, will this enable us to attract and retain the skilled and trained talent required to perform this work effectively and reliably? I would be very clear at this point that these are questions to which we do not have the answer, and part of what we are seeking today is the additional authorization to be able to get the information that we need to proceed in asking and answering these questions. I want to take just a moment at a very high level to talk about the existing system and how if we were to move forward with a San Jose Power, that would change. So starting on the left, you have the electrical generation, which in our case is handled by both San Jose Clean Energy or PG&E, depending on who your provider is. And I mentioned we have about 124 contracts for all sorts of electrical generation at scale. Next, you see the high-voltage transmission lines, typically owned by PG&E, but with new segments being built, in this case by LS Power, which we'll talk about in a while. These are the very large towers that carry the extremely high voltage energy into the substations that then feed it into the distribution system, and then finally into the customers, either the industrial, commercial, or residential buildings that are wired into the distribution grid. The distribution grid is currently run and oper, owned and operated by PG&E. So the changes that we are suggesting to begin today would result in two specific changes if we were to eventually scale San Jose Power. One is that we would be procuring energy through San Jose Power, and in this case, we'd use essentially the same team we use for San Jose Clean Energy to assist us with that procurement, but charged to a different code. So we already have that capacity, and it would just be expanding that capacity to deal with San Jose Power. The biggest potential change in the future would be for San Jose Power to build out, own, and operate a limited amount of distribution network in areas of the city that were new development and select critical facilities, again, primarily looking at the airport and areas around the regional wastewater facility. I'd like to discuss briefly and double-click on some of the new transmission lines that are being built in San Jose. Bottom line, this is good news. This is good news for PG&E. This is good news for the city. This is good news for all of us. Kaiser, which oversees the 27,000 miles of transmission lines in the state of California, has contracted with LS Power as the developer-owner of these lines, and we have, for about a year now, been working as a multi-departmental team to prepare and now coordinate with LS Power now that they've been selected. The benefits of this, as I said, accrue to us all. It supports new development, improves reliability, will be paid for by all ratepayers, and is on a very, very quick timeline to completion. And we've identified a lot of the questions along the route, and we'll be working with them along the way, regardless of any direction that we receive from you today. And I have to say, LS Power has been a fantastic partner in this, very collaborative, not only with us, but with key stakeholders throughout the community. One of the opportunities that this does present is we'll have a new transmission line and the potential opportunity to connect directly into this transmission line if we were to provide municipal electric service. If our technology is functioning and the time zones are right, I'm now going to turn it over briefly to Nancy Klein, our Director of Economic Development, who is joining us remotely, who will talk through some of the issues from an economic development perspective. Nancy, are you able to join us?
Yes, thank you, Kip, and good evening, Mayor and Council. Just want to mention current situation with some of the challenges that PG&E and the rest of us are experiencing. Currently, many project, our projects are behind on processing their applications. And as you see here, projects of all types. In order to address this, 35 cities and organizations are advocating for solutions. Legislation is being passed. PG&E has established a task force to reduce interconnection delays, and PG&E is upfront saying there's no quick fix. PG&E is striving to have 80% on-time compliance by the end of 2024. Next slide. Additional challenges come in seeking financing. PG&E, as Chronicle has reported, has requested a $7 billion loan from the Department of Energy to cover the gap between funds it can raise from its balance sheet and what it is required to finance currently approved projects, including burying some power lines. Challenges with wildlife, next slide, please. Challenges with wildlife mitigation are substantial, including the cost. PG&E is reportedly needing to spend over 60% of their capital budget on wildfire mitigation. And an additional challenge that is substantial, that we always or very rarely don't think about, is the challenge PG&E has in anticipating future planning. Projects say they're moving forward, but they don't necessarily. And at the same time, other projects may move forward that were unanticipated, making it extremely difficult to know exactly what to plan for in terms of capacity and infrastructure. Given how important it is to bring on affordable housing, housing, and jobs, it's critical that power is available in a timely fashion and hopefully at a reasonable price. The demands and challenges are staggering, so it is necessary for staff to bring to council any opportunity that may help mitigate the volatility and the challenges with delivering that capacity, cost, and timeliness. And with that, I'll turn back to Kip. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. As we embark on this exploratory phase, we in the city do not pretend to have all the answers, but we have assembled a very strong team to dig into the questions and over time provide counsel with a balanced professional recommendation on the best path forward, if any, for the city of San Jose. The team is led by Lori Mitchell, who is an engineer with 25-plus years of experience in the industry, including operating a municipal utility, and supported and led at the program level by Jim Caldwell, who has 43 years of electric, electric utility experience, including general manager at the LAD Department of Power, Water and Power, and Deputy Assistant Secretary for Electrical Policy with the United States Department of Energy. We are also bringing onboard consultants with Flynn RCI and Advisian, who will be supporting us in this analysis and answering these questions. I will now turn it over to Lori and Jim, who will walk us through some of the details of this proposed ordinance change and the opportunities it may create, starting with Lori.
Thank you, Kip. Lori Mitchell, Director of Community Energy. As Kip and Nancy stated, Title 28 presents several opportunities. The first opportunity is the opportunity to connect directly to these new transmission lines. This is probably a once-in-a-hundred-year opportunity. These new lines do not get built often, and so it's important to look at all opportunities as they get cited here in the region. The second is to improve reliability and resiliency of critical infrastructure, in particularly looking at opportunities with the airport, Deardon, and North San Jose. And then finally, supporting economic development, and as Nancy said, electrification and our climate goals. We know that it's going to be very important to make sure that We know that it's going to be very important to make sure that all of our residents and businesses have access to more electricity. And then finally, it's important that we look at options to reduce costs for ratepayers, and our preliminary analysis shows that this may reduce costs by 15% to 25%, and that is due to some of the benefits of municipal utilities in that they don't pay taxes or shareholder profit, and they typically have a lower cost of borrowing. So, this is an overview of some slides that we presented almost four years ago during the first study session that we had on this topic. So, just as a reminder to council, we have been looking at this for many years per council direction. This slide shows the public utilities in the United States. There's over 2,000 U.S. publicly-owned utilities. You can see those little dots all across the United States. So, about 1 in 7 Americans are served by public utilities. It's a very proven model, and most of these public utilities reinvest revenues back into their communities. Next slide. Here in California, it's also a very common model. We have 46 publicly-owned utilities in California. They serve about 25% of all Californians. The two largest publicly-owned utilities are SMUD, the Sacramento Municipal Utility District in Sacramento, and then LADWP, which serves the City of LA. But there's lots of medium and small municipal utilities as well. Some of the most common examples many of you may be familiar with are Santa Clara, Palo Alto in San Francisco, but also in Southern California, Pasadena, Anaheim. Disneyland is operated by a publicly-owned utility, as well as Roseville in the Central Valley. And then there's also some very small, successful municipal utilities. Here in the Bay Area, the City of Alameda, and then Healdsburg is also a muni, as well as Shasta Lake and Lompoc near Santa Barbara. Next slide. So, this is some data from the California Municipal Utilities Association. They report that public utility outages are 67% shorter than private utility outages. And then the next is from PG&E's Independent Safety Monitor Status Report that was published in the first quarter of this year, which ranked PG&E in the bottom 25% of the nation in terms of frequency and duration of distribution outages. And we know that here in San Jose, we had many customers suffering from outages back in 2020 and in 2022. Next slide. Here is some data, also from the California Municipal Utilities Association, on the rates offered by municipal utilities. So, public utility rates here in California are about 15% lower on average than private utilities. Here in Northern California, they are 32% to 67% lower than PG&E. And you can see that here, the City of Santa Clara, almost 50% lower for their residential rate and about 30% for their business rate, and then significant savings both in Sacramento and even in Alameda, very small utility, you know, producing in the 15% to 25%. And so, that's where some of our numbers come from in the additional estimates on lower costs for our residents. Another important fact is that many municipal utilities operate airports. So, here in the Bay Area, both SFO and Oakland International are operated by a municipal utility. So is Los Angeles International Airport. So, we think that there are benefits to looking at this and potentially serving our own airport with a municipal utility. So, in terms of the proposed structure that we're recommending, you can see on the left our current structure, where we have our Community Energy Department that administers San Jose Clean Energy, which is our Community Choice Aggregation Program. Under the new structure, the Community Energy Department would be renamed to the Energy Department. We would continue to administer the CCA, San Jose Clean Energy, but we would also administer a new entity called San Jose Power. It's important to note, as Kip explained, that we need to keep the funds for these two entities separate so that the ratepayers are only paying for the services they have, but we can share resources across the entities and track their time to the different programs. So, our power supply staff, our regulatory staff, customer service staff could support both entities. And then finally, Public Works is responsible for design and construction. So, here's a quick summary of the municipal code changes. So, first and foremost, it creates a new title, Title 28, which authorizes the formation of a city-owned utility called San Jose Power to provide electric service for selected new load in the city. Then it has revisions to Title 2, which defines the duties of the Director of Public Works to provide design and construction oversight to San Jose Power as the city engineer. There are revisions to Title 4 to establish San Jose Power's operating fund to segregate these funds. And then finally, there's a simple rename of the Community Energy Department to the Energy Department. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jim Caldwell, who's going to talk us through some of the needs of the grid of the future that we're looking at.
So, I'd like to cycle back to the way Kip started about the transformation that we are ongoing in the state and on the planet, basically, and how we utilize and how we generate electricity. So, the constitutionally agency which sets the forecast for how this goes is the California Energy Commission. And in the Constitution, they do the load forecasting, which then leads to the plans for infrastructure development and all of the sequel-like processes that you need to go through in the permitting and everything, so that the central forecast is what drives all of these plans. And the California Energy Commission is forecasting a 50% to 70% load increase over the next 20 years. And if you go out a little bit further, most of the scenarios that are developed out that far show us basically doubling our use of electricity in this state between now and 2045, 2050. And that the estimates of how much infrastructure we need to move that power around and get it to customers ranges in the $50 billion range at the state level. So, the point today, though, is that these plans, which have been promulgated for the future and put on the shelf and so forth, they're now beginning to become real, that we are now beginning to see, for the first time in roughly 20 years, in the state, net load growth, that for the past 20 years, our investments in energy efficiency, our investments in customer investments in rooftop solar, has basically either negated or maybe even exceeded the natural load growth up until this point. But last year, in the August heat storm, where we had a lot of those distribution-level outages, the load that was served passed a peak that was historic. The last peak was set in 2006. This year, the increase in electricity sales that we're seeing as these programs come through is projected to actually reduce rates for transmission, that the load increase and the sales that results from that exceed the increase in cost to support that load increase. So, this is beneficial electrification if these programs are right. If you build it too soon, you build it in the wrong place, then that money is wasted. If you build it too late, then the load cannot show up, but you've spent all the money anyway, and the rates go up. So, this coordination, this cooperation between all the folks is critical as we get into this. And when you break that down to the City of San Jose level, and it's one thing to talk about this at the state level, but you take it down to our level, what these forecasts are showing is that in the City of San Jose, our loads will be increasing roughly 36% more than the average load increase for the rest of Northern California. We are, because of who we are and where we are, we are a locus for some of these things, and these impacts are happening faster here. That's the reason why the ISO decided that they needed this $1.4 billion investment in these new HVDC lines. But it doesn't do you any good unless you can get that power from these locations out to the meters and the places where it's being consumed. So, this load, so all of this load increase needs to be coordinated, and the city itself needs to be involved in the priorities. We are the ones who understand. You listen to Nancy talk. She has people coming in all the time, talking about where they need electricity. The city knows better than the ISO and Folsom what we need, what our priorities need to be, and how we need to do it. So, we need that seat at the table. And one of the ways to get that seat at the table is to become a utility. When you become a utility, now you're a member of the club. Now, you have access to all the data that everybody else has. You're not just some party to the proceeding that presents your two-minute speech before the council and then sits back and hopes that somebody listened to you, or hopes that somebody happened, that you actually have the seat at the table. And that's what we're saying is the opportunity. And the opportunity that we have is really, as Lori said, is once-in-a-generational, that because these new facilities are being built to generate and drop all of that new energy in two locations, we don't need to do what you normally need to do, which is to go out and buy a bunch of land, build a bunch of substations. All we need to do, if this works, is we need to work with the owner-developer of those and make his buildings just a little bit bigger, have a place for our stuff on his thing. So, it's a matter of incremental investment, a small incremental investment on these large investments that are out there, and that's what we have the one-time opportunity to do. So, back to the slides that Kip showed about where the lines come in. The one on the left is up in North San Jose. The new line that LS Power will be building starts south of Fremont at a place called Newark, at the Newark Substation, comes down to the area around the Regional Wastewater Facility, and then gets converted back into AC and takes on to that star there in the middle at the bottom, which is in Santa Clara at their receiving station. Santa Clara is electrically in the same region as we are on the grid. Silicon Valley Power is seeing the same kinds of load increases and needs to do their plans, and that's the principal location where they will get the new energy. However, we have the opportunity, right there at the Regional Wastewater Facility, to actually hook into there at very low cost. We can serve facilities such as expansion of two new data centers that are actually beginning construction in that area. There is, Nancy Klein has this vision of 160-acre manufacturing development in that area. We could serve that from scratch. San Jose Water is thinking about a desalination plant to secure the resilience of the water supply for the thing. That is a very energy-intensive facility, and that will be right there in the neighborhood. So, we would be looking to make interconnection there and to potentially serve those facilities in that area. There is absolutely no intention to take over or buy out or replace existing PG&E distribution system in the area. As a matter of fact, it would help, because if we take on that new load, that would then relieve their part of the grid from accepting that, and then they could cross some of the items that are on their list to do, and that we could actually, between the two of us, we could do better than either of us separately. On the right there is the other DC line. It starts down in Coyote Valley and drops off at existing PG&E substation called Substation B, which is just south of the airport, Guadalupe Parkway and Coleman Avenue. From that location, again, we have a very low-cost way to connect into that line. From there, we could serve the airport. There's also some data centers north of the airport that we could possibly serve from there. And then down to, down the street from here, to Duradan Station, and some other mixed-use developments in the area and Google's Downtown West project when it comes back. So, that all, what we're asking for is that ability to study these as a partner with all the other utilities in the station, not to displace these folks, but to get in there and help. And we believe that we can do that. So, with that, I think I'll turn it back to Kip.
Thank you, Jim. I want to talk a little bit about stakeholder engagement before we turn it back over to you, council, and public comment. As you know, we deferred this item from August to allow time to engage more deeply, in particular with PG&E and IBW. I wanted to take a moment to share some of the outcomes of those engagements, starting with PG&E. More than a year ago, actually, several years ago, we began to work much more closely with PG&E in emergency preparedness and response, and it's over there on the far left of this diagram, and we've seen significant improvements in deepening partnerships, particularly over the last year and a half, direct proactive communication from PG&E with us, shared data and information, responsive sectionalization of the distribution infrastructure, and what I would characterize as an increasingly trusting relationship. Emergency management, as I like to say, is a team sport, but I particularly want to give a shout-out to both Daniel Sedano and Kevin Conant with PG&E for the dramatic improvement in our partnership in this critical area. In the last few weeks and months, with the meetings that we had, we identified an additional four areas where we think we can and should have that level of partnership and collaboration with PG&E, beginning with looking at electrical connection to development and permitting, where there are improvements on both sides, including our own internal permitting processes that could dramatically improve the times and certainty of that permitting work, to which PG&E is heavily investing and committed to improving. We see huge opportunities in resilience and innovation, potentially going after joint funding and grants, and looking at how we prepare the infrastructure that we have for the coming climate change that will impact us. And we'd love to get more involved, and think it's helpful in both ways, in understanding and supporting PG&E's distribution infrastructure upgrade, as well as their load forecasting and future planning, some of which Jim alluded to. I credit the new regional approach of PG&E, and in particular, the leadership of Teresa Alvarado, for creating the space to begin to explore these partnership areas. I also appreciate Christina Ramos for her support in facilitating our dialogue. Let me be clear, in all of these areas that I have mentioned, we need and want PG&E to be wildly successful. We are dependent on their success for our success, and we seek to be more included in their work and to be a supportive partner going forward. In the sixth area on this slide of energy generation, the city in the form of San Jose Clean Energy is in the lead with PG&E as backup, if you will. I want to again credit PG&E, and in particular, their new CEO, for her shift away from an adversarial approach to CCAs like San Jose Clean Energy to a more balanced, non-compete stance. I should credit her as well for her aggressive leadership to deal more directly than any of her predecessors with the severe vulnerabilities and limitations of PG&E's existing infrastructure. So, this leaves us with the seventh area, limited service of a municipal utility for electric service. On this, the focus of today's proceedings, we are potential competitors with PG&E, and they remain opposed to us moving forward with exploring this option. City staff is recommending that, regardless of any direction you provide today on the municipal utility for electric service, that we should increase our collaboration and partnership with PG&E on the five areas, from emergency management to future planning, on which we have such strong shared interests and can be effective partners and collaborators. IBW, the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, represents a broad range of highly-skilled and trained electrical workers from utility linemen skilled and trained electrical workers from utility linemen, cable splitters, to electricians. IBW workers will be critical to the success of any future municipal utility for electric service in the city of San Jose. In addition to IBW, the effort will require a wide range of trades, professions, and expertise who will be needed to design, build, operate, and maintain any new infrastructure. I want to thank Hunter Stern of Local 1245 and Javier Casillas of Local 332 for their expertise, candor, and willingness to engage in a meaningful way with us. I'm very grateful for the opportunity to learn from these two men and the brotherhood they represent. In our conversations with IBW, both Local 1245 and our own city Local 332, we had the opportunity to visit their amazing new training facility, unfortunately located a little too far to the north, and in the tour and subsequent conversations identified three key areas of potential partnership. One, improved permitting, particularly around the most common forms of electrical connection to new development and upgraded development. This will be particularly important as we seek to retrofit buildings and electrify them. Workforce development and the opportunity to attract at an earlier age people into skilled and trained electrical work and create a pathway to prosperity. And small business development, especially in those areas that some of the larger contractors and businesses aren't as interested in but are vital to the conversion of our green electrical future. We think all three of these areas are important for us to continue collaboration. IBW 1245 in particular also made clear the criticality and difficulty of attracting and retaining the highly skilled and trained electrical staff that will be needed to be successful. They were also concerned with any shifts in service area that would adversely affect their members, their jobs, benefits, and pensions. They also said clearly that a passage of the MUNI code that enabled the creation of a utility was viewed as a red line for them, and they would oppose. Despite this opposition, I remain optimistic that as we develop the business case, if so directed, in part based on the cost information they provided, and we define our limited service area to new green/brownfield development and select critical city infrastructure, that we can find an approach that meets IBW's legitimate and important concerns about protecting their members and meets the needs of the city. As with PG&E, staff recommends we continue engagement with IBW to further explore the three key areas of potential partnership regardless of today's direction. And if the council does choose to adopt the MUNI code today, we will seek IBW's continued engagement moving forward with our analysis. So returning to where we began, we are seeking this action today so that we can ask and answer four key questions. If the city were to provide municipal utility for electric service in limited areas of the city, could it be done in a way that would reduce electrical energy costs for the consumer? Would it allow the development of more innovative and energy-efficient buildings? Would it increase the electrical resilience of the city of San Jose and our critical infrastructure? And would it enable us to attract and retain the necessary skilled and trained talent to perform this work effectively and reliably? So as a visual, which I, as a visual thinker, always find useful, you see a diagram of what we see as the potential next steps should you direct us to move forward. We think that about the next 18 months or in this exploratory phase, remembering that creating Title 28 does not commit the city to serve any load, and we would require three key council actions and council direction before we were in a position to actually begin implementation. So over the next 18 months, it's light blue, we would work on building out the business case and defining the service area. We'd come back to you sometime in 2025 with your first go-no-go direction and decision to us. If that were a go, we would proceed forward with beginning to develop a staffing model, creating job classifications, and refining the business model and approach. We'd come to you again sometime around 2026 for your direction and decision, number two, and a go-no-go decision. From that, we would then develop a recommended budget, actually set rates, and begin to be ready for hiring as part of the annual budget process. And the third go-no-go final decision would be the approval of that budget, setting us off to implementation and scaling, starting with some of the lower-hanging fruit that Jim indicated, but taking several years before we were actually delivering services scale. All along the way, we would continue engagement and will continue engagement with community and stakeholders, including IBW, PG&E, and others. So that concludes our presentation, and presented here are the recommendations before you that will allow us to begin our exploratory work. We are now open to your questions, feedback, and direction. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Kip, Laurie, Jim, and Nancy for a very comprehensive presentation. I look forward to the discussion. Let's start with public comment.
I'm going to call the in-person speakers first. When I call your name, go ahead and come down and line up on the stairs. The first person down can go directly to the podium. I have Tim McRae, Teresa, Hunter, Will, Donnie, and Ruth.
Good afternoon, mayor and council members. My name is Tim McRae. I'm the Senior Vice President for Sustainable Growth at the Silicon Valley Leadership Group. Silicon Valley Leadership Group sees no need to change the municipal code to allow municipalization of the city grid or an as-yet undefined portion of the city grid at this time. The proposal has many uncertainties. It's not clear what area the proposal would cover. It's not clear how individuals and businesses inside and outside that proposal area would fare in terms of cost, feasibility, service. And we think this all points the need for more study before taking action. You're basically being asked, change the code, we're not sure why yet. It seems one argument to rush to do this is to connect the LS Power transmission line, but there's no need to change the municipal code to push for that line to connect. I know there's a level of frustration with PG&E, and I know there's a sort of anti-PG&E sentiment at times, but going municipal will not necessarily solve all of the problems cited. You don't just wave a magic wand and have a functional municipal utility with cheaper costs and no interconnection backlog. It's also worth noting that SVLG supported in the state legislature a bill that was mentioned in the presentation, SB 410, by Senator Becker, which we expect will address, help address the interconnection backlog. And you've been asked to say, let's address the interconnection backlog, and then you've been given this long timeframe for when it will take them to take the city to build up. I don't think that the quick interconnection backlog issue is solved by going municipal. Getting into the municipal utility business is a big leap. We encourage the city to study the issue further before making that leap.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. Teresa Alvarado with PG&E. Good to see you. For over 100 years, PG&E has powered the transformation of San Jose from agricultural center to the capital of Silicon Valley. As San Jose has evolved, so has PG&E. Over the past year, we've made significant improvements to our new business interconnection process, building a faster, easier process to connect new customers. We have existing capacity to serve new load coming into San Jose today, and we are ready to serve the growth that San Jose envisions in its future. We have a robust networked grid that provides the redundancy and resiliency that the large tech companies require, and we have the skilled and trained workforce that supports the community every day. So we're struggling to understand why the city is proposing to change the municipal code to create a new utility prior to studying the risks of this weighty decision. This is what staff says is needed, but again, the city needs to take no action to the municipal code to study how best to serve our mutual customers. Forming a government-run utility is an extremely complex endeavor that poses significant financial risks to the city and taxpayers. In my submitted letter, you have seen some failed MUNI examples. I'd like to comment on the cities of Palo Alto and Santa Clara. Both jurisdictions have more than a century of experience delivering energy to their customers. IBW can speak to the risk of competing with them to recruit a separate skilled workforce for San Jose. But I do want to note that both Santa Clara and Palo Alto have an obligation to serve all customers within their city limits. San Jose is instead proposing to create a two-tiered energy system where the municipal utility will only serve certain very large retail customers in select areas of the city. There is no way to contain costs to only those large new customers who would benefit all costs, particularly between--
Thank you. Next speaker.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Hunter Stern. I'm with IBW Local 1245. 1245 is the largest IBW local in the country. We represent utility workers here in Northern and Central California, as well as Northern and Central Nevada. In addition to PG&E workers working here in San Jose, we also represent most, every public utility worker in Northern California. So first things first, thank you very much to each of you who have supported requiring or encouraging city staff to engage with the IBW. It's been very helpful. Thanks especially to Councilmember Ortiz for your various memoranda. Again, supporting our wages and our benefits. These are key issues to union members and particularly union members working in one of the highest cost of living areas in the country. 1245 wants to ensure that its members continue to work, whether they work for PG&E, whether they work for the city of Santa Clara doing business at Silicon Valley Power, or any other public utility within our jurisdiction. We cannot allow changes, whether it's the change to the San Jose municipal code, or changes to jurisdictions of existing municipal utilities, or changes to PG&E's jurisdiction, that will handcuff and cause our members to lose their job. There are ways, we believe, and we've suggested to city council, or city staff, rather, how the municipal code can be changed, which does not create a full-fledged utility that would serve retail load here in San Jose. And the language used that's presented in the ordinance does allow the city to take over PG&E in one fell swoop if it chose to. I'm very, I understand very clearly that that's not the--
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon, mayor, members of the city council. My name is Will Smith. Thank you for taking the opportunity this evening. My name's Will Smith. I represent IBW Local 332. We are the largest inside electrical union in Northern California. We represent nearly 3,600 members, 3,600 electrical workers that work daily here in Santa Clara County. Many of those workers, they live right here, and their home is right here in the city of San Jose, so we have a very interested stake in this matter. Our members rely on public and private sector employment for excellent jobs, for family sustainable wages. As you consider moving forward to study the investment in the public utilities, I hope that you will be cautious as well as inclusive with your deliberations. Our membership wants to be, wants to have a seat at the table. We want to make sure that we're not on the menu. And I'm asking you to ensure that IBW 332 is lock and step with you each and every step of the way. We are invested in growing a highly skilled and trained workforce to improve the job quality in this industry. We appreciate the efforts thus so far by the city staff to get us up to speed on the issues and the concerns. The financial and legislative impacts of your actions will have significant impacts to the city budget and consumers, and we want to make sure that we have certainties that we will have our voice at the table. We want to make sure that labor has a voice at the table and that labor is included in all future discussions. Please support the memo by Councilmember Peter Ortiz, and it affirms the next steps that includes our voices, the impact of workers.
Thank you. Next speaker.
How's everyone doing today? I'm gonna keep it real short. My name is Donnie Davis. I am a member of IBW 1245, also employee of PG&E. I just wanted to say I don't want to see any of my coworkers, my fellow coworkers getting laid off. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon. Can I just have a moment? Because I don't see the timer. I'm gonna time myself for two minutes. It's not on, so I don't want to, I want to know when I--
Yeah, let's take a second to make sure the timer's showing.
We'll restart the timer.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I had to restart it. Okay. Good afternoon. My name is Ruth Marino, and I'm representing San Jose Community Energy Advocates, Climate Reality Project Silicon Valley, and Mothers Out Front Silicon Valley, which represent thousands of San Jose residents. We urge you today to approve the staff recommendation to establish the municipal utility and as described in the memos from Councilmembers Cohen and Davis, Councilmember Ortiz, and Mayor Mahan. We also support the comments today from San Jose Clean Energy, which describes the need for successful collaboration with PG&E and IBW. However, we'd like to correct one of the statement from IBW regarding San Jose Clean Energy's rates. The city never promised 15% below PG&E. What was approved in the ordinance was rates either at, either equal to, or below PG&E, which we've achieved, and at the same time, we have provided 60% renewable energy, which is higher than PG&E and which we need for the climate crisis. On the other hand, too, as described today, if the city were able to establish this municipal utility, we could offer rates at 15% or more below PG&E, which would allow San Jose to compete with the city of Santa Clara in this very limited area, and it would allow San Jose to bring more jobs to the city. Thank you.
Moving on to our virtual, moving on to our virtual speakers. Jordan?
I am neutral on this ordinance change. However, the opposition does seem to be a bit more convincing than the supporters. The opposition presents many detailed arguments backed by numeric data and facts, many of which haven't been adequately addressed by the supporters, but today's presentation did help explain the support side better, so thank you, staff. I would be supportive of a municipal electrical service utility only if it can be shown with extremely high confidence that it would be successful and that the city realistically has the resources to tackle it, and also that it would be equitable for all of the city's inhabitants that won't have access to this new utility. So far, this hasn't been demonstrated. The argument from staff seems to be that the creation of Title 28 is needed in order to make any more progress on this work. This argument hasn't been sufficiently explained. It was explained a bit today as being needed to get a seat at the table and get access to data. Can you elaborate a bit more about this data that we don't have access to and why we don't have access yet? And it basically sounded like we are creating a power utility in name and structure. Is that enough to get us a seat at the table, or can we potentially still be excluded on the basis of not being real yet? And can you please change your terminology when speaking to the public? It sounds like we are creating a utility today, it just isn't going to be doing anything yet. Additionally, I'm concerned that the creation of an energy department and director will create perverse incentives for that department, for them to push for the creation of the electrical service utility, even if it turns out to not be in the city's best interest. Is there some way to get around that perverse incentive? Maybe an existing department would be responsible. That way, the people working on this project don't feel like they need to get the utility created in their job descriptions. Also, it would be nice if the title would sunset automatically if we don't make any forward progress on this by 2029, so we don't have MUNI code below. Thank you.
Josh, followed by Javier. Josh?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hi. Dear Councilman Mayor, my name is Joshua Rodriguez, and I am the Political Director for the South Bay Labor Council, which represents over 100 unions in Santa Clara and the San Onofe County. Any action taken regarding future investments in a public utility must include all stakeholders. The financial and policy impacts of the city of San Jose have not been studied deeply, and the workers most impacted have not been a part of the conversation the whole time. I want to thank Councilmember Peter Ortiz for outlining the specific ways that you can include labor and industry professionals in the next phase of this exploration. Our affiliates want a seat at the table in certainty that our voices are not only heard but considered and included. As the city studies future investments in a public utility, we expect that you will be cautious and inclusive in your deliberations, especially related to impacts on the city budget, its workforce, and local consumers. We respectfully ask you to support the memo-- and local consumers. We respectfully ask you to support the memo from Councilman Ortiz, which affirms that voices from impacted workers and industry experts are not left out of the conversation. Thank you.
Javier, followed by Brian.
Thank you. Good afternoon, council, and Mr. Mayor. This is Javier Casillas. Sorry I couldn't be there today. I have a meeting of my own starting in about a half hour. I am the business manager for the Electrical Workers Union, IBW 332. Will was there earlier, and he mentioned that we have thirty-six hundred members. We also have an additional thousand members working in the jurisdiction currently. One of the concerns that I have going forward is how we got to this process without a due investigation and study. I'm worried going forward that the costs will run out of budget. And for me, I would strongly encourage everybody to listen and read Councilman Ortiz's memo, and definitely I encourage everybody to follow the direction. My biggest issue right now is that the IBW and the electrical workers weren't actually brought into the conversation until a little over a month ago, when we ended up at this stage. That shouldn't happen in the future. You're asking for something that's monumental and a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to be made. We are the ones that are going to be tasked with actually doing that for you. So I'm definitely encouraging everybody to keep the conversation open. I want to thank Kip and Nancy for coming down, taking a tour of our facility, and definitely listening to some of our concerns. The biggest thing, the financial and legislative impacts going forward are going to be a challenge. And I want to really ensure that you guys are going to take the time to listen to labor and everyone that has a seat at the table.
Brian, followed by Paul.
Can you hear me, ma'am?
Yes.
I'm sure you get that a lot. I'm going to try to do this without crying. Elena and Phelan McLeod died in the Zog Fire. And eighty-four people that died in the Paradise Fire. I know this doesn't directly affect that, but safety is a big deal, and accountability, and not being in the back pocket of the California Public Utilities Commission, or vice versa. And I'm not talking to the lady from PG&E, because she's one of the quote-unquote workers. The PG&E workers are fine, and we do want to make sure labor has it, and we want the unions to be supported, because they're the backbone of this country, in my opinion. But we can't forget, I want that name, those names to echo, Elena and Phelan McLeod. They were in a truck trying to get away from a fire, and they didn't make it. I was in a house, and I was in a fire, and I did make it after forty-two percent third and fourth degree burns. It sticks with you. My accident was fifty-five years ago. It sticks with you. Nobody should have to do with that, especially when it's because, apparently because of the failing, at least in the one fire, the PG&E admitted fault and confessed to forty, what was it, eighty-four involuntary manslaughter charges. I don't even know how you wrap your head around that. This is still in the lawsuit stage, and it'll, but the names and the people need to be remembered in the safety. Thank you for letting me talk.
Paul, followed by Andy.
Yes, Paul Soto from the Horseshoe. I get my information from many sources. I read Forbes, I read Fortune, I read the Wall Street Journal, I read the New York Times. And consistently, what happened was this. In 2016, when Google signed on that deal, and Gene Cohen was in on those conversations, Gene Cohen was at that table. So I'm letting the electrical workers know that. So you can, you can check, she's right there, dude. Check her on this. Nineteen billion dollars was estimated in terms of all the building that was going to be going on. It was estimated nineteen. It'll probably be higher in the next couple of years. But what happened was this, is that Google cannot be built, and that's why there's a pause on it, until the infrastructure, the electrical infrastructure of BART and all these other systems are set in place first. The electrical grid has to be in place first before Google can build, because Google has to be built on top of that system. And here's why. And I'd like that to be a part of this discussion, because lies of omission are just as detrimental as lies of commission. Now, the lie of omission that's going on here is that the AI technology that is going to be promoted by Google and other tech companies is going to need extreme amounts of electrical power. I mean, exponential amounts of electrical power. Now, that is conspicuously absent from this conversation. Okay? Now, we need to start talking about that. Google is going to be building these AI technologies, and those computers are going to consume large amounts of it. Also, the data centers. So these have to, and so what they're doing now is just saying, okay, well, we're going to build this electrical system, because it has to accommodate that. So that's really what's controlling the building. Also, to the, to the electrical workers, just threaten a strike, homeboy. I will back you up. Threaten a strike, man. Just strike.
Andy, followed by Blair.
Yeah, our power grid is in pretty rough shape of affairs right now. You know, they want to keep building all these electrical cars and having this all plug into the system. I just don't, I just don't understand how California's expecting this. You know, these cars require so much energy, and you're already having rolling blackouts. And do you know what happens when blackouts happen? Niggers go crazy.
No.
Blair?
Hi, Blair Beetham. I wish people wouldn't use those insulting words here at Public Forum. This is for everyone, and those words are really hurtful to hear. I would like to consider this item in terms of, I'm kind of a rookie. I'm a total beginner. So, from public comment, I was actually learning, this is how I'm feeling about this issue. So I was kind of in the ballpark. You're building this project for large industrial use. Will it also be serving residential use to some degree? If you, if you are, you know, there was really good public comment today, and a number of issues, like you're going to be creating this little separate system from community energy of San Jose. It sounds like there's still, will be a community energy of San Jose, but this separate system creates, I'm not very comfortable with that. I understand that you, you actually can be building a future for PG&E, the future PG&E that is of interest, and I understand that. But we really have to be mindful that, you know, there is a really specific purpose that we have a future to develop community energy and to separate ourselves from PG&E. Thank you very much for the words of Brian, who spoke of, you know, we're at a new era of considering community planning and natural disaster capitalism, and we're not going to be doing that so much in California anymore. Thank you. I think we're working towards that. Hawaii needs to learn those lessons now, and I think they are. They can look to what we're doing. We're trying to get out of that framework. And that has to be considered in how we talk about these issues with the PG&E. You know, we can't owe them a whole lot. We are real concerned to build for ourselves, and really work as a community effort to build things. And things can naturally present themselves, how to work with PG&E in the future, possibly. Thank you.
Jenna? Christopher?
Yes. What are we gonna do when the niggers start-
Back to the council.
Okay. Thank you. All right. We're back to continue discussion of item 6.1. We'll start with Councilmember Davis.
Thank you. I want to thank all of the public commenters who were respectful and actually stayed on topic. I find the slurs that are being used by some of the public commenters on Zoom to be very disruptive and frankly anxiety-inducing for some of us. So I just want to put that out there, that I hope everyone will remain respectful in their comments going forward. I don't appreciate the disruption to our meeting and our regular business. I do want to thank the staff for their presentation. I really appreciate the additional context this time around, especially the delineation of the questions that are going to be answered, that need to be answered, and the timeline for the decision points that will come back to us. And Jim, I just have to say, you had me at access to the data. I know that's probably not enough for everyone else, so I have a couple of additional comments. And I would like to go back to the slide. Lori, you did this slide about the setup. Can you reiterate how the municipal utility will be set up? And can you talk about how that will be set up now, today, if we pass this item, but also if it ends up becoming a full-fledged utility? This was back slide, something like that.
Sure. No, happy to take the question. So what the muni code lays out is a rename of our department, the Community Energy Department, which is an existing department that operates San Jose Clean Energy with a staff of just about forty-five people now, which is amazing. So that department would continue to operate San Jose Clean Energy regardless of any action today. But they would also administer San Jose Power, and in the early years, this is still exploratory work. And so the staff working on that are Jim Caldwell and my staff, and from time to time, one or two other staff, but charging to the account for the publicly-owned utility.
Okay. So I just want to be clear, because some residents have also expressed the concern that I think I heard during public comment about stress on general fund, on other, on San Jose Clean Energy ratepayers, or on their taxes in some way. Can you talk about, so first of all, I know that, for example, airport fees don't go into the general fund and don't impact anything else. And I also know that clean energy rates and finances don't impact anything else. I think they're called a special fund. Can you talk about how the San Jose Power would be set up, and how it would be, how it would be structured in terms of impacting ratepayers who maybe were part of San Jose Clean Energy but not part of San Jose Power?
Sure. So you are correct. So San Jose Clean Energy is a hundred percent funded on its own rate revenue. No funding from the general fund whatsoever. San Jose Power, if we stand that up, would be similar, and that the ratepayers that pay into that would be paying for that cost-of-service model. In the exploratory phase, funding is coming from two sources. One, San Jose Clean Energy, but not specifically for the municipal utility. It's to study more electrification, some of the greater of the future, that benefits all San Jose Clean Energy customers. And then there is a small amount of general fund funding to fund this exploratory work.
Thank you. And for my colleagues who have not been on the council, as long as some of the, some of us who are really long in the tooth, like me and Councilmember Jimenez, that's what happened with San Jose Clean Energy at the very beginning, before we decided to move forward with it. We used a small amount of general fund to study the issue, to decide if we wanted to go forward. Thank you for that. And I do want to echo what Kip said. We want PG&E to be wildly successful at what they do. I personally would just like them to be successful on their own, without a PCIA fee on our own San Jose Clean Energy purchased power. But that's a little bit beside the point. I also want to talk about the new development. So PG&E has rightly prioritized wildfire risk reduction in terms of their projects and their capital projects. And that's why I think that this is a good time for us as a city to evaluate whether we, like Santa Clara, Palo Alto, and San Francisco, should provide at least some electrical distribution locally. I actually think this will help provide more IBW jobs, more quickly, actually, than if we had left it to PG&E. And I have family members who are very interested in going into the trades, by the way. The other thing I wanted to say, and this is again, a little bit of an aside, but just for IBW, especially 1245, Caltrain is electrifying and is going to need a lot of your members for maintenance of their lines. So there is, I think, very little risk of people losing their jobs, because I don't think there are enough electrical IBW members now. And I really am very excited about working with workforce development to have more IBW members. And I appreciate Councilmember Ortiz's memo on that. So getting to the memo and getting to a motion, I want to ask Nora about Councilmember Ortiz's memo. Item three mentions clean energy, building electrification in addition to electrical transmission or a municipal utility. Since that was not on the agenda, and this is a new memo today, is it, is it possible to move these items, or do we need to have them come back when their specific issues are taken up about clean energy and building electrification? Because I'm happy to make an amended motion that is just specific to the utility.
The item as noticed on the agenda today is very specific to establish a municipal utility with the name of San Jose Power, and to submit the interconnection application, which is really the reason in part for the establishment of the utility at this point. I think these other items in the memo from today are items that are outside the scope of the agendized, outside the scope of the agenda today, although certainly will be part of the discussion going forward, and I suspect also part of what the committee, what TNE is potentially looking at and others. But today, it's pretty limited. So these are really outside the scope of what we noticed.
And Nora, when you say these, can you just clarify? Are you speaking specifically to recommendation three? And Councilmember Davis, you have the floor, obviously. I just want to make sure you're really precise in which recommendations you're speaking to. Is that just three?
It's really the subparts of three. And there is, it appears that item three is in some ways an overlap. The first paragraph of three is an overlap of two. Councilmember, your mic isn't on.
All right. Point of clarification. We are talking about electrification, expanding electrification services in the city of San Jose. And I did, I did work with Kip and Lori on this memo. So I didn't like, just introduce it today. It's something I've been working with staff for the last week.
Yeah. And they have talked about being, having meetings with the union and with IBW and with PG&E. But these are specific referrals for today with respect to standards, employment standards, labor standards, the workforce development under C, and all of which can come to the council as this moves forward. But it's beyond what was agendized for today.
It's essentially saying we're doing something. We're voting today to, well, I'm not going to debate the lawyer. I'll go with, I'm just saying, my perspective is, we're voting today to create, for the language, to create a San Jose municipal utility. I wanted to make sure that we do it right and do it with our partners in the workforce, because we could go maybe fast alone, but we could go farther together. And if not, if we don't do something like this to set in standards, we're continuing, we're going to continue to have the incidents that we have today where people aren't being felt, included, and workforce people are feeling like their jobs are going to be on the chopping block. But that's fine. I guess I'll submit this to rules, something like this. Thank you.
Well, I got a point of clarification as well. I got a question on that, on that, on- Yeah, there's a very tight question. I want to get back to Councilmember Davis, who has the floor. Correct. Wouldn't labor standards, or speaking to, you know, future electrification needs with what would come with the creation of a municipal-owned utility-
Yeah. Yeah.
And the labor standards there forward?
So I've got a, I've got a motion that I'm happy to make, and I think it will go to your intent, Councilmember Ortiz, and I think it will answer your question, Councilmember Candelas.
All right, thank you.
So what I would like to move today is Councilmember Ortiz's memo, item one, item two. And by the way, that includes the staff recommendations, because Councilmember Cohen and my memo accepts the staff recommendations to move forward. Item three, with the amendment of the first paragraph, direct staff to meet with stakeholders from International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers Locals 332 and 1245 and Working Partnerships USA to develop a plan on labor standards, ensuring the city of San Jose's work on a municipal utility promotes high-road labor practices within the city, its contractors, and its partners. Staff should return to council by 2025 or sooner with a plan that includes the following: A, express our intention that the city would meet or exceed employment standards for workers within PG&E as noted in the September 28, 2023 supplemental memo if the city chooses to create and operate a municipal utility. And then I will leave out, as recommended by Nora, B, C, D, and E. And I think those items are coming back at different times, and I'm sure, Councilmember Ortiz, you can work with staff on when those items are coming back in the work plan. And then I want to include item four, and I want to include the mayor's memo in my motion.
Second.
Councilmembers, there are second?
I'll second.
Okay. I thought I heard it here, but I.
There were two of us said at the same time, so.
Everybody's second.
And then we'll be talking.
Councilwoman Cohen is the co-author of Davis's memo, you have the second. Okay, I heard a lot of voices. Okay.
Just point out the flaw in the system. When we put on our mic to second, our hands go down. So I don't know what, you know, you had noted on that.
I.
Okay, that's fine, but your hand's down, too. I'm just putting that out to you.
Yeah, I see Dewan and Batra up. I know we, I believe we had Ortiz, Cohen, and Vice Mayor. We'll get it, we'll get there. Everybody will be heard. Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Councilwoman Davis, are you finished with your comments? Great, thank you. And how did I know the PCIA would show up? Always does. Okay, great. So I'm going to go next to, it was Dewan, and then I believe we had Ortiz next. Is that right, Councilmember Ortiz, after Dewan? Okay, so we'll go to Councilmember Dewan next.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, staff, for working hard to collaborate with LS Power, PG&E. I know it's difficult. And thank you for working with our local union, 1245 and Local 332. And I know this project will create more jobs than taken away. And by supporting this new energy, not only will you support more businesses that come here, and it will support more jobs that is needed right here in the city of San Jose. And I look at reducing the cost to our residents and increasing the resilience for our city critical infrastructure as well. Not only that, as I mentioned earlier, to creating new jobs, retaining skilled and trained talent, workers to stay right here with the city, San Jose. And not only that, we're using renewable energy. So I want to thank you, Councilmember Davis, to include the mayor memorandum, because I was going to ask for a friendly amendment on that anyway. I just have a question to staff. If LS Power somehow fail, will PG&E will be the redundancy system to back up LS Power? Am I correct?
Thank you for the question. So LS Power has been awarded by the California Independent System Operator, and so they operate the electric grid in California. So if LS Power failed, the California ISO would need to select another developer.
All right. Well, thank you very much, and I definitely will support this.
Great, thank you, Councilmember. Councilwoman Ortiz?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to start my comments by sharing my thanks to all the staff that have been involved in this project, city staff, PG&E staff, IBW staff. I especially appreciate your willingness to take the extra time to engage with stakeholders and, of course, my staff as we were putting together the memo to move us forward on this important topic. Today's action, I truly believe, is making history for San Jose, and it's also truly highlighting the need for a robust engagement strategy when we go into projects like this, and time needed for all parties to digest the subject matter. The potential for a municipal utility is an exciting one for me, I think, for the entire city council and for the public. Delivering power to select areas will be a bold move in building the city's capacity. And I believe that a municipal utility would be able to serve the community in ways that an investor-owned utility is restrained by. But leading up to this vote, we've seen, we continue to see a lot of anxiety from PG&E and many of our partners within the labor community. And I think it's incumbent on us as a city to make sure our enterprises provide high-quality careers for our residents. And I appreciate the work of my colleagues, Councilmember Cohen, Councilmember Davis, who in their memo direct for collaboration with PG&E and the IBW. And it's important to recognize that the work that a municipal utility would undertake includes many diverse sectors of the workforce. It's essential that every aspect of a future San Jose Power, from construction to transmission, meets or exceeds the employment standards from within the existing standards within PG&E. To do so collaboratively with, for us to collaborate with the IBW is a great start, and it's incumbent that we bring in voices represented of all affected labor trades, and work to create a plan for the council to create high-quality jobs where workers will have a real voice on the workplace. And that's why we introduced the memo to do that, to add South Bay Labor Council and the Building Trades Council as stakeholders for staff to work on future plans. And I appreciate my colleagues for accepting those, and I know that for the others, we'll get to them when those items come before us. I'd also like to direct staff to, as we mentioned, a labor standard plan for the city's work on clean energy, which we will get to, and building electrification and electrical transmission, making sure we are creating the highest possible quality jobs and creating high-quality workforce development pathways for our residents, because we've got to make sure that we're building those pipelines for our community. And finally, the memo did include direction which ensures the council is properly aware of what risks there is to a city general fund with any investment in power generation and distribution projects. You've already answered a lot of my questions. I appreciate you being collaborative. I appreciate all our partners who are here, and I look forward to voting for the motion. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Councilmember. Councilwoman Batra?
Thank you very much for that report, because this report seems to address the logical reasons why you would consider something like this at this point in time. You've well established that the electrical energy is an essential service for everybody, commercial, residential, everywhere, and the need for it is going to continue to grow. And as the technology changes, other opportunities come, it is our responsibility to investigate if other alternatives have become more attractive to serve those needs. So at this point in time, having an evaluation whether we should become an electric utility and provide that service, which PG&E has provided for a long time, is extremely appropriate, considering that there are new distribution lines being laid out, the demand is going to exceed what we have today. So I think I consider that this evaluation is well justified to be done based on the timing it is. Okay? I do have some questions about what it does to the current customers of PG&E, which is most of, if not all of, San Jose, commercial and residential. So with this new service, assuming we become an electrical utility, like what is proposed or is foreseen, what will be the impact on the current customers, if any, in terms of in those pockets, if we build some new homes, would we be able to see a speedier connection? That would be one. The other one?
I think some of those questions will come as we both develop the business case and determine the service area. We really can't say what the impact will be until we understand what that service area is and if there are any existing PG&E customers, or the extent of the new development versus brownfield development. The intent of the direction that we are pursuing in the analysis is to focus on, as we've said, critical city infrastructure, primarily the airport and the regional wastewater facility, and those lands which are currently either undeveloped greenfields, such as those in the regional wastewater facility area, or brownfield that are being redeveloped, such as those around downtown. But there might be incidental areas here and there, so I think we could take that as direction or as part of the analysis to both work with PG&E, to understand any impacts that they see or perceive, and also do our own analysis of any impacts and bring that to the council for their consideration as we develop the business case. But we don't have the answer today, because we don't know what the service area is.
Yes, so the reason for asking that question was because we're emphasizing on the new parts of the work, which all probability are going to get served better, cheaper, easier, more reliably, and all that. But we do need to, for the public, to understand what it does, if anything, makes it better, worse, or nothing, in those areas, because 98% of the population for foreseeable future is going to be continued to be served by the PG&E infrastructure. So the mayor's memo asks for study of certain things, and I was going to suggest that one item which should be also on that list should be the impact on the service reliability and service outages for all commercial and residential, which will continue to be served by the PG&E infrastructure. So that would be item one more on that item. Does that make sense? It's a study in your, I think you're more or less saying the same thing, that you should bring that answer later.
Let me go to staff first. Is that kind of within the scope of the analysis? It sounds, yes? Okay.
Yeah, that's absolutely something we would study and bring back to you in the business plan.
Okay. Great. Okay, is that sufficient? That'll be part of the business plan?
It wasn't, it spells out all of the other items, so are we saying we'll add this in there?
I don't think, I think there are probably dozens, if not hundreds, of things that'll be looked at. I mean, I don't know if Councilwoman Davis wants to explicitly add it, that's up to her as the maker of the motion. But I think if staff's saying that's included in the analysis, then I'm confident it will be. Councilwoman Davis?
Since staff says we're going to include it anyway, it's fine to add that to the motion. Fine with me.
Seconder?
That's okay with my.
Councilwoman Cohen? We'll go ahead and add that. Don't touch the mic.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's fine. I mean, I think it's already in the spirit of number four from Councilmember Ortiz's memo, that any financial impacts would be studied and brought back to TNE, so if we want to explicitly include it, that's fine.
Thank you, Mayor. In, assuming everything moves smoothly, when would be the earliest we may see first customer utilizing the new infrastructure for the under-the-power electric company or the utility which we'll establish?
Well, first of all, I never assume everything moves smoothly. I've just been around too long to make that assumption. I think the very earliest that we would see any service delivery, and it would be limited, would be at the very earliest 2027, 2028, in a limited area, but that would be, I think, at the extreme early side. Jim, you're probably better positioned to answer this. I think it's, I think the answer is, we don't know. And it's going to be a while, and I'd like to come back with the business case and analysis. And Jim, anything to add?
When I'm in the shower in the morning, I've thought of some ways that we could do things earlier. I mean, I understand the difficulty of saying, give us this thing now, and then we'll come back to you with some benefits in 2028. And I believe we have to be able to show some progress before 2028. This is, this is not, you know, come back when you've got it all done. This is going to be a collaborative. And I believe that as we pursue these things, that we could possibly uncover somewhat creative ways to serve pockets earlier. The main thrust of what we're trying to do depends upon energizing those HVDC lines, and that will not be much earlier than 2028. But with this structure, we could potentially think of some creative ways to serve, to serve people earlier, to demonstrate as much as anything else, and to begin, you don't go from zero to 100 overnight, you know? You take incremental steps. And we have to take incremental steps and figure out how to do a little bit better every day, every day, get a little bit closer. And I think we can do that.
And again, I would just temper that, saying that from my perspective, I want to make sure that we do this right, and we think about how we scale. So it's going to be a while on this one, because if we end up doing this, it's going to be a multi-generational investment, and we don't want to rush into something that doesn't make sense, so.
Perfect. One more question on, when you talked about that the rates are going to be cheaper, are those going to be 15% or whatever the numbers were, 5%, 15%? Are those going to be cheaper for all the people served by clean energy currently? Or is it only going to be for the new loads which people will take?
Two pieces to that. One, we'll come back with what we think the actual savings will be as part of the business case, taking into account some of the information on cost of both the infrastructure and cost for the skilled and trained labor that will need to make sure it's well-run. Those rates would accrue to and apply to only the area in the new service area, and San Jose Clean Energy would maintain a separate rate system and a separate procurement system from the new municipal utility.
Just to be clear, we do not expect San Jose Clean Energy's rates to be in that 15%. We compete on the generation side of the bill, which is about a third of the bill. So most CCAs are somewhere around parity to a 5% discount, not 15%. The 15% to 20% is for the distribution service, and that's just based on those structural differences of cities in that they don't pay taxes, no shareholder profit, and the lower cost of borrowing. But as Kip said, that is one of the things we need to analyze very deeply and come back to you with the business plan, is what is exactly the cost and what are those savings?
Just recap on, so I heard that the possibility is that we will have two-tier rate systems here, the ones who are served by the PG&E infrastructure, and the one who are being served by the, our San Jose Electric Utility infrastructure. Is that correct?
Correct. There would be two different utilities providing different rate structures based on their costs and need to either provide profits or not.
All right. Yeah, and when you come back with the business thing, I think it would be good to highlight that, so that the expectations of the rest of the 98% don't change in terms of getting a reduced rate, because that is one of the messages here. So I think it would be good to clarify that. Thank you very much for all the answers and the good report, detailed report. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Councilwoman Batra. Councilwoman Cohen?
All right, thank you. And as everyone in the audience can tell, we are still getting you. And as everyone in the audience can tell, we are still getting used to this new sound system and technology here, so we'll figure out some of these flaws. First, I want to thank our friends at IBW and PG&E for all the engagement in the last couple of months. We've, I know many of us have had several conversations with all of you, and I appreciate the input that's helped us as we've navigated this discussion. I am very excited about the LS Power project to increase the capacity of our grid in San Jose. Given that our goal is to electrify San Jose completely over the next six or seven years, better reliability is essential. So the LS Power lines, coupled with the existing PG&E lines, are crucial to our energy future. And the lines will provide an opportunity through south and downtown San Jose and also in north San Jose to take advantage of them. Right now, we know that Santa Clara has got, has been the center of data centers in the city, and one of the reasons for that is their municipal utility. And it's important that the data centers that we are, that come in have access to cheaper, quicker, and reliable energy. And having an option for the municipal utility may provide that for them, and I think it's worth exploring. If you look at the map that was on one of the slides, there was a yellow star next to the north San Jose LS Power line. That's exactly where Microsoft is building a really large data center in north San Jose in the next few years. In addition to that, there's about three other data centers planned in that vicinity. And we've been hearing about this as a potential benefit for some of those projects as they move forward. We also have companies in north San Jose who have been concerned about the reliability of the power they receive. One of the companies, big tech companies, has called my office three times this year about power outages on their campus that affects their R&amp;D. And while I know we're going to continue to work with PG&E to improve that reliability, there may be some types of projects that require, or that would prefer to have a different provider of their, a delivery of their electricity. Do we have enough information today to move forward with a public utility? I think we all agree that the answer is no. But the question is, do we have enough information today also to decide that PG&E should be our only option going forward? I think the answer to that question is also no. And that's the decision before us is whether we pursue, and at least the idea that we might want, need a second option here in the city as we grow and provide more jobs in, in the tech fields. We have a once-in-a-generation opportunity to take advantage of the new transmission lines that are being installed and operating by 2028. So I think it's important for us to at least begin to explore that. Just to go back to the Councilmember Batra's question about two different utilities, I just want to show the, talk about the parallel in San Jose we already have with our water system. Most of our customers in San Jose get their water from San Jose Water Company, which is a for-profit shareholder-owned water company. But a portion of our residents in the city receive water from San Jose Municipal Water Company. And they actually pay significantly lower rates than the people who buy, get their water through San Jose Water Company. By the luck or the draw of where they live and who their service provider is, that is the fact, and that may end up being the case here. And, you know, that's just, that's something we, I think, can agree is, could be a benefit to our overall economy in the city, even if there ends up being two different plans, just like there is for our water system. So today's vote is really only about studying the potential of offering a second option for delivery of power to new developments. And, you know, despite what I think were some misinterpretations in the media and some, I think, poor headlines in the last couple of months, there is no intention to change how power is delivered to the residents of the city who currently have their power delivered by PG&E. I know there was a headline that said, "San Jose considering eliminating PG&E and taking over the grid." I, you know, I haven't heard anybody suggest that that's the goal, and I don't expect that that would ever be the plan. It wouldn't make financial sense to try to do that. Also, by law, a municipal utility would have to be an enterprise fund. They cannot have an impact on rate payers that are served by the other provider. So there would be insulation between those, and I think that's important to point out. And finally, I want to thank Councilmember Ortiz for his memo, which clarifies our intention as a city to provide additional good-paying jobs for electrical workers. I believe that given the structural advantages that a municipal utility can provide, and we will only move forward if the analysis shows it will provide those advantages, we will easily be able to make sure that our employment standards and benefits are as good or better than those offered by PG&E. And I think it's, it's important that we include that assurance in our intention and our vote today. So thank you to all of my colleagues, and, and thank you to those who commented on this today.
Thanks for that summation, Councilmember. Appreciate it and your memo with Councilmember Davis. Okay, Vice Mayor Kameh.
Thank you. I do have a question. As I looked at your potential next steps, I was curious, under the exploratory phase, once you submit an application, does it take two years to get responses? Is that why the next sort of like critical line is in 2025? I mean, and I understand that you want to do things carefully and you want to do things in a way, but I was just, I was just, you know, wondering about the timeline.
No, it should be quicker than that, but we are also building in time there to do the business plan, to do some stress testing of that and all the modeling, and put together that report for City Council to, to come back to you.
Great, thank you. Well, I too would like to thank staff for all of your work. I'd like to thank all of those who have participated and have come together in, in a very short time. So I, I think that that has been very, very positive. I do agree with Councilmember Ortiz that we are making history, and the future is electrical. So no matter what happens, we are going to need future IBW workers and, you know, create that pipeline and, and continue that. So I do see that, that no matter what happens, we're all moving. California is moving in that direction, and so San Jose can be a leader there. I do want to say that I am very grateful for Councilmember Davis's motion, which I'll be supporting, and all others who had put out their memos. This is critically important, but it is just the very first step in the exploratory phase. So there are many other decision points coming along, but I think that it is a, it is a way of being able to continue the dialogue and figure out, how do we prepare ourselves and, you know, our future workforce for what's coming down? So, you know, working in partnership with PG&E, IBW, and others, making sure that we continue to emphasize the two things that have been mentioned, safety and reliability for the community. And it was very loud and clear, the one gentleman who talked about safety, it is something that the community is always concerned about. So I think with that, I just want to say thank you so much and look forward to the potential next steps.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Cundalis?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I too wanted to thank staff for their presentation. I also wanted to thank the folks who came in to provide public comment and feedback to us. I don't want to rehash too much of what my colleagues have already said with regards to the, the history-making, the opportunity, the unknowns. I, I think we, we still need to do more due diligence. Staff needs to do a little bit more due diligence, and at this, at this juncture, I think it's, I think it's important to do that. I do have a question. I don't know if it's staff nor, one of the public comments pertaining to the changing in the municipal code in order to submit an application, I was hoping somebody could provide a little bit more clarification on that.
Yeah, I actually would probably ask if the city attorney could provide a little of her guidance on this matter.
Thank you, Councilmember, for the question. It's not imperative, but we think if we are going to try to make the application and we don't have the utility established, that there may be an effort to try to undercut that application. So at this point, a little belts and suspenders perhaps, but why we're starting the process and creating the utility, and it's just our effort to tap into the ability to get some of that new power that's coming into the city.
Okay. And so if, if we end up changing the municipal code and we do our analysis, our cost-benefit analysis, and realize that the, the, the numbers aren't there and it doesn't look like so, what would the process of like changing, changing back, re-merging departments? How, I mean, how stream, it's easy to do that now that there's no departments, but it's a lot harder to do, to do that once you have an infrastructure, once you have, you know, the logistics of it. So I, walk me through what that process would look like if we are going down this path?
Yeah, I'll start and then turn it over to the city attorney to probably give some more of the legal details. The good news on this is that there was nothing in this work that would require us to unwind anything significant. I would agree, I think, I think I wrote it down, there was a comment about ordinance bloat. I do not believe that we should include things in the ordinance that aren't pertinent anymore or they're outdated. So I'm, I'm of the school that should we come to a business analysis, or should you provide direction that we should move forward on this? Our very next recommendation would be to pull the ordinance out of the, out of the municipal code so that there's no confusion as to the creation of a municipal electric utility that's not supported by a business case. That's a fairly straightforward piece of work, but I would let the attorney opine on that.
Thank you, Kip and Councilmember. Right now, the, the structure, we're just putting a structure in place without a lot of municipal code provisions and without regulations and all that. We're still going to be looking at all of that. So unwinding it shouldn't be particularly difficult if the city decides after the analysis and looking at all of this, that doesn't want to move forward with a, a utility, a separate utility. The department itself can, can remain the energy department. It wouldn't necessarily, you know, have to go back to just Clean Energy Department or things like that. So there's probably not a lot to unwind, and the council may decide that they want to leave the possibility of a municipal utility in, in the code. That would really be up to the council at a future date.
Okay, all right. No, thank you, thank you for that, Kip and Nora. I, I think that's helpful, and at this stage, I think it's, it's definitely worth exploring. Like Councilmember Cohen mentioned, you know, some areas in our city have an alternative to San Jose Water Company, and District 8 being one of them. We have the San Jose Municipal Water System. And, and our, our rates are, although I hear it every, every time I come out, we need to lower the rates, they are cheaper than San Jose Water Companies. But in the meantime, I'll, I'll look forward to supporting the, the motion on the floor. Thank you, Councilmember Davis, for your leadership in putting together that, this motion. So, thank you.
Great. Okay, thank you, Councilmember. I think that exhausts comments. Appreciate all of the thoughtful memos from all of my colleagues. Also want to thank our city staff for leading this analysis and keeping us engaged and taking the time. We deferred this item because I think we needed more time for conversation, even to get to this early stage, and I appreciate your willingness and foresight to do that. I want to thank our partners at PG&E and IBW for the continued and constructive engagement. I've appreciated our conversations and phone calls. I want to encourage us to continue to have that open dialogue and collaboration as we do this investigation. And again, just thank you to my colleagues for the thoughtful conversation, all of the very thoughtful memos. And Councilmember Davis, she did a very nice job of weaving those all together into one intelligible motion that I think we're likely to support here. So thank you for that. Okay, let's vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Great, thank you. Thank you, everyone. Okay, we have one item left on the agenda before we get to open forum, and that is item 8.1, resolution of intention to establish a pedestrian mall on North San Pedro Street. We do have a staff presentation. I see blog A coming down. We'll jump into it.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Blagis Alaj, Deputy Director with Office of Economic Development. I'm here this evening with my colleague Cameron Day from the City Attorney's Office, deputy, senior deputy city attorney. And we've brought two recommendations to you today for your consideration. First, the adopting a resolution of intention to establish a pedestrian mall on North San Pedro Street between West Santa Clara Street and West St. John Street pursuant to the pedestrian mall law of 1960. The second recommendation is to set a public hearing for Tuesday, January 23rd, 2024, in accordance with that pedestrian mall law of 1960. So both of these recommendations are in line with our goal of continued vibrancy and a safe environment for visitors and residents on San Pedro. A little bit of background to this effort. In 2020, the San Jose Alfresco Initiative allowed businesses throughout the city to basically expand their business operations outdoors in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. And in July of 2020, San Pedro Street between Santa Clara and St. John Streets was closed to non-emergency vehicular traffic. In June of 2022, the City Council extended the, the street closure under their emergency declaration through June of 2023, and told us as staff to explore the potential of leaving San Pedro closed to vehicular traffic more permanently. In May of this year, we were directed by City Council to proceed with the implementation of the pedestrian mall law of 1960 to permanently remove vehicular traffic, non-emergency, or non-emergency vehicular traffic from the street. And so over the course of this time, 2022 and 2023, we've had a number of stakeholder outreach meetings with business and property owners directly on the street and in close proximity. And in the last, last month, in August of 2023, had a meeting with stakeholders that was hosted by the Downtown Association. So a little bit about the procedure to establish a pedestrian mall. We are here today with a resolution of intention for your consideration and potential ultimate approval. Following that, we will have, there's a public noticing process that needs to be completed at least 90 days before the public hearing that will occur in January. We have affected property owners that may file a written claim for damages with the city before the end of the scheduled public hearing. And after hearing any objections, the City Council may adopt a resolution either abandoning the proceedings of the pedestrian mall establishment or proceeding with establishing it. After any, if there are any claims, and after settling those claims, the City Council would then adopt an ordinance with rules and regulations that govern the operation of the pedestrian mall. And as designated by the pedestrian mall law of 1960, the claims for damages can be paid from either general funds, other available monies, or the proceeds levied by an assessment, which is not something that we are proposing at this time. So just a really quick design on the street. This is the pre-COVID layout, kind of the street. You can see the, the sidewalk and on both sides for pedestrians, and then we have the existing, or the previous, the existing car traffic in the middle of the street. And with the pedestrian mall configuration, and actually the configuration that we've seen since July of 2020, we have the pedestrian walkway moved to the center or to the street portion, and we have expanded business operations out to the curb on both sides of the street. And the Market San Pedro Garage is obviously a very important amenity, both for the San Pedro area, for SAP Arena, and for just generally folks that are coming downtown. So it's very important to make sure that, you know, access both ingress and egress from the garage were maintained as smoothly as possible. In the pedestrian mall layout, we do close off the vehicular access from San Pedro Street into the garage. You can see there in the lower right-hand corner. The entrance to the Market San Pedro Garage on Market Street remains, and the two exits, either onto Market Street and/or onto the northern portion of San Pedro Street, will remain. So that's, if you've been out to San Pedro recently, that's exactly the configuration that we have now. It's exactly the configuration that we've had since July of 2020. And then just one photo of kind of what it looks like on the south end of the street. You can see the, a couple of the businesses have pulled out their outdoor seating. We've got the pedestrian walkway down the middle of the street, and that allows also for emergency vehicles to be able to access the street if needed. So the next steps in this process are, again, after today's meeting, assuming that we move forward with a resolution of intention, we'll need to post- we'll need to post that resolution of intention on San Pedro Street at least 90 days before the hearing in January. We'll need to mail the resolution of intention to all the property owners abutting the affected portion of San Pedro and intersecting streets at least 45 days before the hearing. And then we will have the public hearing on January 23rd, 2024. And with that, Cameron and I are here to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Blog A. This is very exciting. Would love to see us do even more of this in the years ahead. Let's go to public comment.
Start with in-person speakers. I have Nate LeBlanc.
Good evening. I'm Nate LeBlanc, Business Development Manager with the San Jose Downtown Association, speaking today on behalf of the association. This is exciting, isn't it? I've personally been involved with the closure of San Pedro since the very beginning during the depths of COVID. Worked very closely with Blog A and many other members of staff on that. So I'm excited that we're here to kind of finally put a formal shape on what this might look like in the future. There's definitely questions out in the community about what this will, what this will mean for them, how long it will take, how much it will cost, what the beautifications will be, what this will end up looking like in the future. But I think the Downtown Association would love you to see you adopt today's resolution. Let's take the time and effort to work out those outstanding issues. And then just as a personal hope, as I kind of wrap up very quickly here, love to be back here again, supporting this for Post Street at some point in the future. And thank you all for your time.
Going to our virtual speakers, Paul, followed by Brian. Paul?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Paul Soder from the Horseshoe. No, no, no. And here's why. This, all this property belongs to Mayor McHenry and Company. Now, we already agreed that Thomas Fallon has no place of being revered or being respected in this city. We already said that with the removal of that stain of colonization that he represents. Now, what you want to do, very inconsistently with that policy, with that policy decision that you made to remove his statue, now you want to consider investing $10 million. That's what it's going to cost. $10 million. You want to invest $10 million of racist money into that racist infrastructure in that racist area where that racist mayor of San Jose lives, because that's what we're doing. You are going to really actually consider with a straight face building up the infrastructure of a place that represented racism in California history. I mean, really think about that. If you voted to have the Fallon statue removed, which there's members on this council that did, then how can you consistently, without being hypocritical, how could you possibly vote to build up the infrastructure of where that man lives? Because that's where this, that's what we're talking about. Not only that, COVID is the reason why that area is being exploited because of the deaths that happened on my side of town in Sausalones is the reason why this area is getting built up. Absolutely not.
Brian, followed by Leonard.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I didn't really, I haven't really studied this particular subject too much, so I'll acquiesce to Paul. He tends to be very focused on that stuff. I'm more interested when it's a pedestrian mall is that cars are separate from people because it's not working too well. And I hate to say that. It's sad for our zero vision. Because, you know, we just know that. We know that there needs to be safe distances, and we want to try to encourage walking, especially in the downtown area and in other areas where people congregate. It could have an effect on the business, making sure everybody's engaged and making sure, you know, that nobody profits, that it's the city that profits, the people in the city, not just one group. And I don't know how better to say that. I wish I would have studied this a little bit more. Thank you.
Leonard, followed by Blair.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. I would like to discuss how every single aspect of the LGBTQ movement is Jewish, starting with...
No, no, no. Not on the agendized item.
Blair?
Hi, Blair Beekman. Thank you, Mayor Mahan, for those efforts you just offered. For myself, for this item, it's my feeling that, I talked about it in public comment a few weeks ago. I was visiting the San Jose area the second week of September. It was the week of the federal Bayou Assi Approval Authority meetings up in Dublin. And so, you know, I was hanging around the Bay Area, and I saw, you know, I've been seeing those barriers you currently have at Post Street and at San Pedro Square. They were talking about them at the Bayou Assi meeting as temporary emergency barriers or emergency situations. And, you know, I, you know, it connected to me that there's a certain industrial look to them that I think can be appealing to yourselves and that they are, the mandate's temporary, and it can be convenient for yourselves. But they have an air to them that's really uncomfortable to me. And then I hope in how you develop the future of this area that, you know, it, you can consider new barriers, basically. I think that's an important thing. The smallest and thinness of them and the heaviness of them may be appealing, but they have such an industrial look and a look of, you know, protecting us from terrorism, you know, rather than, you know, promoting community well-being. I hope you can really work on it. And thanks for the words of Paul. He offered something really interesting to consider. Boy, I don't know what to say. If Paul can offer some constructive ideas what the future of this area should be, that can be important. And thanks a lot for listening to me on this item. Thanks for your time.
Jordan?
Hi. In general, I support pedestrian malls. And in fact, I did send in a writ public comment supporting this item. Paul's comments are interesting and definitely are worth taking pause on and thinking more about. You know, I don't know any of the details at all about who owns the land and the businesses in that district. Maybe that's something I should learn and others should learn. I think regardless of, you know, whether the, you know, person or persons who own that land are racist or not racist, I think the more important question is like, is there a majority landowner there who would be disproportionately benefiting from a public investment? You know, if it's a lot of small businesses and a lot of different landowners who are all going to benefit, I think this makes sense. You know, if there's going to be one predominant landlord who is going to benefit from this public investment, then it would make more sense for that particular landowner to be investing in the street rather than the city spending a lot of money for something that will benefit, you know, one particular landowner. So I think it depends on these details that I don't currently know about, and I hope you'll consider them. But in general, I do support pedestrian malls. I think they're great for the people who are already going there anyway. And as well for people who would go there if it were more accessible than it is today. I do think you should also explore pedestrian malls in other areas that are frequented by lots of pedestrians, and especially in areas where there are a lot of small businesses and not, you know, one major landowner who would disproportionately benefit, such as potentially Post Street. Thank you.
Darnell? Ricky?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
I would like to speak towards the landowners in the city, the county, the state, and actually, this purviews our entire nation. BlackRock actually is one of the largest landowners in the entire country, let alone in our small area here. And BlackRock is the world's largest asset manager with US dollars, $9.42 trillion in assets under the management as of June 30th, 2023.
Ricky, sorry, this topic is about the pedestrian mall on North San Pedro Street.
Oh, my apologies. I thought the last commenter there was talking...
Jim? Back to the council.
Thank you. Okay, Councilor Torres.
Yeah, before I, before I go into my comments regarding San Pedro, I actually, I really want to thank our city clerk staff for being so aware of these, these folks trying to disrupt our meetings. So, and to our city attorney as well. So thank you so much for all your hard work on this. You know, hate, we shouldn't tolerate hate, and, you know, here we are, making sure that people feel safe making public comments. So thank you for that, by the way. This is a good first step in the right direction. If we didn't have a, if we didn't have a closed down San Pedro Street, we wouldn't have a vibrant downtown San Jose. And so if we truly want to make the city of San Jose a walkable city, this is a good first step. And so thank you so much to our Office of Economic Development for bringing this forward, but also the place I used to work at before, which is San Jose Downtown Association. Nate LeBlanc was actually my supervisor. So it's good to see my old boss from a distance. And so, but we as a city work with San Jose Downtown Association to make sure that we're creating a safe, vibrant downtown San Jose. And again, San Pedro Street, with the closure of San Pedro Street is going to happen, hopefully. And so with that, I motion to approve items 8.1.
Great. Thank you, council member. Second by Davis, Vice Mayor.
Thank you so much. Just an observation, as we're looking at the mall itself, and I know that the exit from the parking lot is going to remain open so that you're able to go out from two areas. I was downtown all weekend, and I parked at the structure. The one thing that I will say is that, for some reason, I don't know if they're picking up or whatever it is, but people had parked, I don't know if it's temporary or what it was, but they parked, and it was very hard to kind of like go around and, you know, kind of come out. So I don't know if they're not supposed to park there, but people were parking there. And so just an observation in terms of, you know, if everything is closed as it is already, I don't know, maybe we need signage or something, or, you know, more clarity as to where they can park or not park. Because when you're coming out of that driveway, it was, it was kind of like you have to go all the way around them to, if they don't park perfectly like to one side, they're right in your way. So just something to think about. But with that, I certainly support the motion.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor. I think we're ready to vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Great. Thank you all. It's an exciting step forward. Forward to seeing it fully implemented. Okay, we are on to open forum where we will not tolerate disruptions to the meeting, but it is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on city business that was not agendized today.
Brian, followed by Blair.
Thank you. And again, wait till you get, there we go. Thank you for all the, did today. And I'm not sure, Mr. Mayor, if this is city business, but you were speaking about hate, and you're absolutely right. And I wish to apologize to people of the Jewish faith and people of color for some of the very, very nasty comments that were stated. It just, I don't even know what to say. I mean, you've heard me say this before, and I'll say it again. We're all on this pale blue dot together. And we sink or swim because we're all in the same boat. People may not realize that, but we all are. And that should be on city business because if the planet goes, then the city won't have a lot to worry about, and pretty much the rest of this is moot. And there's that possibility. For the first time in the human race, we possess the capacity to kill ourselves as a race, as an entire species, and pretty much every other species on the planet, including most microbes. Wow, what an accomplishment that was. And so it is business, as every human being, to realize that. Thank you, man.
Blair, followed by Gail.
Hi, Blair Beekman. Thanks for the meeting today. Interesting work by the city clerks. They did a really nice job in how to address the issue. Good luck to ourselves, how we address this in the future as well. I wanted to thank Diane Feinstein for her years of service as the mayor of San Francisco and as a US Senator from California. She has offered over 40-plus years of civic service that I think has had an important impact in most persons' lives in this country in some way. Her position on issues always, has always tried to be very well balanced. Myself, along with many others, have always tried, have always had a frustrating time how once mayor and then Senator Feinstein could be very agreeable to Republican points of view on issues. But yet, I have been trying to patiently learn in how she has always worked in her life for all sides in the process to engage and work from a place of good liberal values and ideas and of a good liberal, open democracy tradition. It's really nice how she was able to do that. I also felt it was her good woman's perspective she had on issues that can make such a process feel simple, cooperative, caring, and involved. For all of her faults in not being more progressive and possibly more important in not wanting to... I'm back. Sorry, I cried. I'm back. No, I cried. I'm back. For all of her faults in not being more progressive and possibly more important and not wanting to take a more openly progressive stance on issues, I think over time and for years to come, in our own continued struggles towards better policies and practices, we will continue to see and feel the decent work and efforts she was a part of. Boy, I cried. I'm sorry. I hope you understand my crying and my feelings. Don't hurt me, please. Thank you.
Gail, followed by Paul. Paul?
Yes, Paul Soder from the Horseshoe. You have to understand, this city has to understand and know its history. Now, Tom McHenry owns San Pedro Square. This is a fact. I don't care what LLC he's got it under. Tom McHenry owns San Pedro Square.
Yeah, that was agendized. This needs to be an item that was not on the agenda.
Jordan?
Hi. Thank you for supporting remote public comment and for allowing the full two minutes, even when we're having all these distressing disruptions and even during the very long budget discussion a few weeks ago. Appreciate the mayor, the city council, and especially the moderators for enabling this. I do hope that despite the distressing disruptions today that you will continue to offer remote public comments. It is a great accessibility tool for those who are not able to attend in person, which during the workday is many people in our city. Another note about accessibility of the agenda. One thing that limits accessibility, I've found, is the confusing order that the agenda takes, where sometimes it skips around numerically. I'm sure there's legal reasons for that, so I'm not questioning that. But it could be nice if, you know, somewhere was published the actual order that the agenda items are going to be heard in. I know you can technically figure it out if you know what keywords to Ctrl+F4 in the agenda, but it would be helpful for people who don't know, okay, Ctrl+F4 will be heard before so that everyone knows what order the agenda items are going to be heard in. With San Pedro and other areas, consider... With San Pedro and other areas, consider emphasizing active transportation. There's very prominent ads for free, Park SJ for 90 minutes, but very little advertisement for other modes. This weekend, I biked to San Pedro and used the BikeLink Secure Lockers in San Pedro, then walked to the Little Italy Festival. It was great. BikeLink also has free parking initially and then cents per hour to park long-term. Hopefully, more of these BikeLink lockers can be installed everywhere, and we can advertise for them more. Also advertise for other modes and for VTA transit to our popular destinations. Thank you.
Gail?
Hi, good afternoon. How is everybody? Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Okay. I just came back from Cruise Drive, K-R-U-S-E. We are trying to make Cruise Drive a safe environment for the RVs and the folks that are living there. I want to thank Mayor Mahan for his work on trying to get the unhoused into housing. But right now, I'm a little sick and tired of the police going out to Cruise Drive and harassing the unhoused there and posting them, coming in and taking vehicles. They might not have the registration, okay, but these are vehicles people drive. One of my friends today couldn't go to the doctor because he was scared. The cops were there. Please, Mayor, let's keep these RVs in one area. I'm working very closely, and I want to give my shout-out to the member, David Cohen, in his office. They're supporting, we're trying to make it safe for people. But the police are harassing the folks out at Cruise. They're scared. This one gentleman couldn't go to the doctors. He has cancer. He was scared the police were going to come in and take his RV. They posted RVs. They cannot take people's homes. And this is what the police are doing. So, please, please do something. Talk to the chief, talk to Gina, who is the head of that area. Something has to be done because people are scared. I know half the council looks like they left, and so, I don't know who's listening, but it's really important. We are waiting until the various side is open. To me, why can't it get open, and then let's get some services in?
Gabe? Gabe? Andrew?
Yes, I have a question about the police budget and stuff, the law enforcement.
This is only for.
Sorry, what?
This is the open forum, items that are not on the agenda, and we cannot entertain any questions.
I can ask any questions?
We cannot entertain any questions.
Okay, this is public forum. Anything not on the agenda, right?
Correct.
Anything on the agenda, not on the agenda that is city business?
Okay. So, I guess the issue I have tonight is I've heard you guys cut off free speech when people weren't cussing, when people weren't making anything that was violating any rules, but you guys just get butthurt and you keep cutting off people's microphones. You know, you're going to get nasty callers when you act like this. You guys are violating the free speech. You're violating the Brown Act. I don't know. I mean, I guess the city's just looking for a lawsuit because they just keep cutting people off before they even say anything offensive. You know, you guys have people on here ranting and raving about how all the police are racist and all white people are bad, but the moment somebody says Jew or black or something, you guys cut them off, and you act like a bunch of fucking faggots.
It's not city business, and that's inappropriate.
Russell? Russell? Leo? Beatrice? David? David? Gabe?
Believe we called Gabe.
Andrew?
Called Andrew, too. Are there any new names? Anyone who's not spoken?
Back to council.
Okay, thank you. We're adjourned.